The Royal Commission into Violence, Abuse, Neglect and Exploitation of People with Disability is now in session.
Good morning, everyone. I welcome everyone who is following this hearing, which is the 22nd public hearing of the Royal Commission into Violence, Abuse, Neglect and Exploitation of People with Disability. This hearing will concentrate on the experiences of people with disability working within Australian Disability Enterprises, ADEs. We begin, as always, with an acknowledgement of country, and I invite Commissioner Mason, who is participating in this hearing from Ellis Springs, to make the acknowledgement of country today.
Thank you, Chair. Wherever. I wish to pay my respects and acknowledge the First Nations people on the land on which the Royal Commission is sitting today. We acknowledge the Arrernda people, the traditional owners, custodians and family of Mabandwa, also known as Ellis Springs. We recognise the Wurundjeri people of the Kulin nation, where the city of Melbourne is now situated. We recognise the Gadigal people of the Eora nation, the traditional custodians of the land on which the city of Sydney is now located. We also wish to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the various lands on which you all virtually attend from, any First Nations people who are participating in this session, and those First Nations peoples with disability, including those who are contributing to workplaces and communities across the country every day. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Mason. As I foreshadowed in the closing remarks of the second part of the recent public hearing number 17 on the 2nd of April this year, this public hearing will be conducted virtually. We had originally planned for the hearing on ADEs to take place in the Brisbane hearing room with witnesses, council assisting, legal representatives, commissioners and others appearing in person. Our plans, unhappily, have again been frustrated by a recent outbreak of COVID-19. I again express the hope that future hearings of the Royal Commission will be conducted with witnesses and the public able to attend in person. There really have been very few Royal Commissions whose work can have been so affected by disruptions caused by events that have been beyond our control. The COVID-19 pandemic for over a period of two years, the fires, the floods that have affected so many Australians, and even on one occasion, an earthquake in Melbourne during a hearing. I want to express our gratitude, our deep gratitude, and pay tribute to all those who have ensured that despite the obstacles, the Royal Commission has been able to continue its extremely demanding programme of hearings. Our thanks go to, among others, the staff of every branch of the Royal Commission, to the witnesses who have given evidence, and particularly, of course, people with disability, their families and supporters, council assisting the Royal Commission, who have had to adjust to frequent changes imposed on us by external events, and all the people who have been responsible for the smooth operation of hearings that have had to be conducted remotely. We are very grateful to all who have contributed to the process. Public Hearing 22. This public hearing will now be held over three hearing days with commissioners in three locations. As I have indicated, Commissioner Andrea Mason, OAM, is in Ellis Springs. Commissioner Rhonda Galberly, AC, is participating in this hearing from Melbourne, and I am participating from the Sydney hearing room. Senior counsel assisting the Royal Commission, Ms Kate Eastman, AMSC, is also in the Sydney hearing room and is joined by Ms Cathy Dowsit and Ms Rebecca McMahon of council. Mr Andrew Fraser of council will appear at the hearing from the Royal Commission's Brisbane hearing room. Subject to unforeseen developments, the Royal Commission will hear evidence from about 14 witnesses in all. Three witnesses who will appear in person in the Sydney hearing room. One witness who will appear in person in the Brisbane hearing room. Two witnesses will give pre-recorded evidence, and eight witnesses will appear at the hearing remotely. A number of parties have been given leave to appear at the hearing. Their legal representatives will appear from remote locations, and I shall ask them to announce their appearances shortly. This Royal Commission, as Ms Eastman has explained on previous occasions, has paid particular attention to the pathways and barriers to open employment for people with disability. This is actually the fourth hearing at which evidence will be given on this important subject. Public Hearing 9 considered pathways and barriers to open employment for people with disability. Public Hearing 19 addressed the measures taken by employers and regulators to the systemic barriers to open employment faced by people with disability. And Public Hearing 21 heard about the experiences of people with disability engaging with disability employment services, DESs. Those three public hearings did not focus on the role played by Australian Disability Enterprises, the ADEs, in providing supported employment for people with disability, although the evidence did from time to time refer to the experiences of people with disability employed by ADEs. ADEs have their origins in the sheltered workshops of the 1950s that many people will be familiar with. From 2004 until the rollout of the NDIS began in this country in 2013, the Department of Social Services funded ADEs to provide supported employment opportunities to people with moderate to severe disability through what was then called the Disability Employment Assistance Programme. As the NDIS has been gradually rolled out across Australia, responsibility for the funding of employment support for NDIS participants has been transferred from the Department of Social Services, DSS, to the NDIS. Participants in the NDIS now receive funding through their plans to support them in various employment settings, including, if they choose, ADEs. It's important to appreciate that our examination of the role played by ADEs takes place in the context of a system in transition. The transfer of functions and responsibilities to the NDIS is designed to allow NDIS participants greater choice and control in obtaining the support necessary for them to secure and maintain employment. Since this is only a recent or relatively recent development, the full consequences of the transfer of responsibilities may not yet be entirely apparent. Another important development that will be referred to in the evidence is that the Fair Work Commission is currently reviewing the Supported Employment Services Award 2020. This is an award that covers employers who support employment services, or ADEs. The award permits employers to pay employees with disability a percentage of prescribed minimum rates based upon an assessment using what are described as approved wage assessment tools. These tools are designed, in effect, to measure the productivity of employees with disability when compared with the productivity of employees without disability. The evidence will suggest that the lowest wage per hour for a supported employee of one large ADE is $2.27 per hour. The highest hourly rate is $23.85 per hour, while the average wage of that particular DEA supportive employees is $6.28 per hour. As the Fair Work Commission has pointed out in its decisions, to receive support of this kind, an employee must be eligible for the disability support pension. Therefore, the employee's income will ordinarily include the pension paid at the appropriate rate. As Ms Mitchell, a deputy secretary of DSS, explains in her statement, the Australian Government allocated $67 million in the 2019-2020 budget to support ADEs to transition to a new wage assessment model. The DSS will consider the Fair Work Commission's final decision on its review of the SES award before determining how to allocate the funds. The Fair Work Commission's decision will take into account a three-month trial, which has tested proposed changes to the award, and we may hear something further about that in the evidence. This hearing will concentrate on a number of important questions concerning the role of ADEs. Do people with disability, as employees of ADEs, have opportunities to progress in their careers and in particular, to transition into open employment? Are the wages paid to people with disability for their work as employees of ADEs fair and appropriate? Are the wage assessment tools used to determine rates of pay appropriate? Are the oversight mechanisms in place for ADE providers fit for purpose? In the course of our work, the Royal Commission has received a variety of opinions through submissions and other forms of engagement about the value of ADEs and whether this form of supported employment should continue. This was an issue that was considered by the full bench of the Fair Work Commission in a decision on the Supported Employment Services Award given in December 2019. The Fair Work Commission noted that some organisations had deprecated supported employment and characterised it as segregated employment. The Fair Work Commission did not agree. The full bench of the Fair Work Commission said this: "While we accept that open employment is generally a desirable objective for more severely disabled people, it will not be practicable either at all or at least within the current framework of government support. Jobs in ADEs represent for such persons the only realistic opportunity for employment they will ever have." Accordingly, a factor foremost in our consideration of the wages structure of the SES award, that's the award to which I just referred, is to ensure that, subject to the requirements of the Fair Work Act, the capacity of ADEs to continue to employ disabled persons is not prejudiced," end quote. The full court also concluded, on the basis of evidence presented to it, that, and I'm quoting again, "The employment opportunities which the supported employment sector provides to disabled persons is of immense value to Australian society. Disabled persons place great weight upon the companionship stimulation, independence, learning opportunities and the sense of dignity, achievement and self-worth which supported employment provides them. For the carers and family members of disabled persons employed in ADEs, the support and respite which employment in ADEs provides them and the positive personal effect such employment has on the disabled person is regarded as being of huge worth," end quote. I refer to these conclusions not to express agreement or disagreement about them, but to make the point that the policy issues relating to the future of ADEs are not necessarily straightforward or easy to resolve. Like the Fair Work Commission, we have to take into account the practical consequences of any recommendations we make and the views of all people with disability, their families and supporters. I shall now take appearances. Yes, Mrs.
Thank you, if the Royal Commission pleases. I appear with Mr Andrew Fraser, who's in the Brisbane hearing room, and with me in the Sydney hearing room with Ms Cathy Dowsit and Ms Rebecca McMahon.
Thank you very much, Ms Eastman. I'll take appearances from other parties with leave to appear, starting with the Commonwealth of Australia.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Anderson. I appear with Ms Courtney Robertson. We're instructed by the government to appear for the Commonwealth.
Thank you, Mr Anderson. The appearance for the state of New South Wales.
Gail Furness, Chair, I appear for the state of New South Wales.
Thank you, Ms Furness. There is an appearance, I think, for the state of Victoria.
Commissioners Scott Chestman appearing for the state of Victoria.
Thank you, Mr Chestman. There is an appearance, I think, also for the Bedford group. I'm sorry, I think your microphone may not be on.
I apologise, Commissioner. Veale appearing on behalf of Bedford Industries.
Thank you, Ms Veale. There is an appearance, I think, also for National Disability Services. No, apparently not. And there may be another appearance. Is that to be taken? Yes, I think there's another appearance, Ms Healy.
Yes, Commissioners. Ms Healy, I appear for the witnesses whose pseudonyms are Kate, which is K-A-I-T-E, and Gertr, G-E-R-T.
Thank you very much, Ms Healy. Yes, Ms. Yes, Ms East.
Thank you, Chair. Well, council assisting in Sydney and Brisbane also acknowledge and pay our respects to the traditional custodians on the various lands we're meeting today. We pay our respects to First Nations elders, past, present and emerging, and also to First Nations people watching this public hearing. We also acknowledge that today is the third anniversary of the establishment of this Royal Commission. Well, in reviewing the history of the entities described as sheltered workshops, it reveals a wide range of objectives and experiences. Some of the history in Australia takes us back to the period post the Second World War, when entities were developed to provide vocational rehabilitation services. Some of these entities provided training and skills development for people with disability to enable them to enter the open workforce. But for others, sheltered workshops, as they were commonly called, provided an opportunity for people with disability to develop skills to work in community with other people with disability. Sheltered workshops since the 1960s have been exclusively places for people with disability, and for this reason, it's often described as a segregated, congregated or closed setting. Workers were typically paid minimal or no wages and sometimes paid in the form of training allowances, piecemeal pay rates per work or productivity bonuses rather than actual salary. Workers traditionally were not employed under contracts of employment, and industrial awards, which commonly set rates of pay for workers, did not apply. For the purpose of these opening remarks, I will not address the extensive regulation and funding arrangements for sheltered workshops, or as they're now described, ADEs. The Royal Commission has published a research report, which is fairly extensive, and I'd invite anybody who wishes to look at the history of the regulation of ADE employment to have access to our research report. Well, today, workplaces that are operated as ADEs provide a range of different work experiences. Generally, they include packaging, gardening, landscaping, cleaning, laundry services and food services. There has been a significant change over the past 18 months with the transition from a block funding model administered by the Department of Social Services to a different arrangement, which we'll explore during this hearing, operated by the National Disability Insurance Agency, the NDI. ADEs must now register with the NDI as a service provider in order to claim funding for employment supports delivered to NDIS participants as part of a participant's plan. As service providers, the ADEs must comply with the conditions of registration, including the NDIS practice standards and the NDIS code of conduct. And we're told that there are presently 161 ADEs registered as NDIS providers. But the ADEs have a dual status as service provider and employer. They support employees and, in this capacity, have obligations with these two hats, service provider and employer. The NDIS pays for disability support and pricing in relation to the supports required for individuals. The NDIS does not subsidise wages. Rather, the wages are developed and decided through processes set out under the Supported Employment Services Award. And as the Chair has mentioned, that award is currently under review by the Fair Work Commission. Under that award, there are 22 different approved wage assessment tools that can be used to determine a worker's capacity and then their rate of pay. We know from information provided by the Australian Government that for the financial year 2020 to 2021, there were 17,232 NDIS participants who worked at an ADE. This represents 7% of all NDIS participants. Workers who perform work at ADEs are protected by Australian employment law, including the Fair Work Act and the Disability Discrimination Act. But people who work in an ADE are not paid the minimum rate, wage rate, in Australia. Current minimum wage for Australian adults is $20.33 per hour. Applying the wage assessment tools, it is permissible for workers who work in ADEs to be paid as low as 12.5% of the minimum rate, the $20.33. And that then constitutes a rate of $2.54 per hour. As part of the Fair Work Commission's review, the Commission received evidence about the average hourly pay rate for people working in ADEs in 2019, and that average rate was $7 per hour. As part of the Fair Work Commission's review, one proposal is to set a minimum wage for people working in ADEs, and the proposal is that the minimum wage be $3.50 per hour. One important development to note is that from the 1st of January 2021, ADE workers must be paid superannuation at the same rate as the rest of workers, 9.5% of ordinary earnings or $15 per week, whichever is the greater. So the Royal Commission has heard that many people who work in an ADE are paid just enough not to affect their disability support pension. And it is the experience of people working in ADEs that there is often a very close link between their rates of pay and the preservation of the disability support pension. Catherine McAlpine spoke about this, the Commissioners will recall, at Public Hearing 9. In summary, if a person who has a disability support pension earns more than $180 per fortnight, that can affect their pension and their ongoing entitlement to pension over a particular period of time. We'll explore that in a little further detail during the course of this hearing. Well, as I mentioned, this is the third anniversary of the Royal Commission's establishment. And in October 2020, the Royal Commission issued an interim report. Again, it's a fairly extensive document, but it is available on the Royal Commission's website. Commissioners, in your interim report, you noted this, that Australian governments have a large number of policies and programmes related to economic participation and the employment of people with disability. And you said, "We are interested in how these work together and what changes, if any, need to be made, including through relevant legislation." You said, "We will also explore the relationship between poverty, unemployment and underemployment and violence against and abuse, neglect and exploitation of people with disability." You said, "We will also examine the experiences of people with disability in segregated employment settings." In the interim report, the Royal Commission said that it had heard about the lack of quality or usefulness of work in some ADEs. You heard about poor workplace conditions and difficulties in transitioning to open or non-segregated employment. You also noted in the interim report that people with disability working in ADEs had described being physically, verbally and sexually abused by colleagues and managers in the workplace. And in some instances, when these issues were raised with the ADE service providers, those concerns were ignored or not addressed. In addition to the matters set out in the interim report, in March 2021, the Royal Commission published its overview of responses to the employment issues paper. That's also available on the Royal Commission's website. In the overview of responses, the Royal Commission heard about positive experiences and the benefits to some people with disability working in ADEs. Matters such as social connection, a sense of belonging, support and community were all identified as important benefits of working with an ADE. But the Royal Commission also noted in the overview of responses that many responses raised concerns about wages paid to people with disability, including the practice of wage assessment, the use of wage subsidies and the life course impacts of wage inequality, particularly from working fewer hours or being paid lower wages. The Australian Human Rights Commission, in its submission, which is also dealt with in the overview of responses to the employment issues paper, raised its concern that the supported wage system may be discriminatory and provide inadequate wages. It questioned whether it is an effective tool to incentivise employment of people with disability. Some employers said wage assessment processes are complex and require significant administration that may result in errors such as underpayment. In the response to the issues paper, we were told that the segregation people with disability in employment mostly occurs in ADEs. And respondents identified issues with ADEs about the risk of increased violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation, the lack of social integration and the use of the wage tools producing low and unequal wages. Some of the responses called for ADEs to be phased out, and a couple of responses said ADEs could not be considered as a stepping stone into open employment, given that the data indicates that less than 1% of ADE employees make this transition successfully. We heard that the Independent Advisory Council to the National Disability Scheme said that it was important to support NDIS participants and their families to build confidence to try open services. And it recommended ADEs could become services that help people with disability to participate socially and economically and have interactions with people not paid to support them. Some of these matters have been reflected, Commissioners, in the evidence that you've heard to date. For example, at Public Hearing 9, you heard from people with disability who worked in ADEs. And you may recall the evidence of Jamie. Jamie was 58 years old. He lived with a vision impairment and an acquired brain injury. He had tertiary qualifications, including a master of human services, a master of social work. He had spent over 20 years volunteering and developing his skills and experiences. However, his opportunities for paid work had been limited and generally in ADEs. He said during his employment with an ADE, he was paid an hourly rate of $3.51. He said this was not nearly enough to cover the necessities of life. He said during his employment with various ADEs, he was told his lower wages were intended to ensure that he would not lose his disability support pension. And Commissioners, he said this to you: "A lifetime of unemployment and underemployment has ruined my life and left me welfare-dependent." And he told you that he feels exploited. Well, Commissioners, as you're aware, people with disability have the right to work on an equal basis with others, and this is a core human right. The right to work includes just and favourable conditions of work, and this represents longstanding approaches to human rights. Article 27 of the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities, the CRPD, recognises the right of persons with disabilities to work on an equal basis with others, and that includes the right to the opportunity to gain a living by work freely chosen or accepted in a labour market and a work environment that is open, inclusive and accessible to persons with disabilities. As the Commissioners are aware, the CRPD committee is currently working on a general comment, General Comment 8. The draft of the general comment and the consultation has revealed quite a wide range of responses, including a response provided by the Australian Government. But at its essence, Article 27 requires Australia to safeguard and promote the realisation of the right to work for people with disability. The Commissioners will also be aware, in its October 2019 concluding observations on Australia, the CRPD committee recommended a range of measures that Australia must implement to give effect to its obligations under that Australia must implement to give effect to its obligations under Article 27. With respect to ADEs, the CRPD Committee recommended that Australia first undertake a comprehensive review of ADEs to ensure that they adhere to Article 27 of the CRPD and provide services to enable people with disability to transition from sheltered employment into open, inclusive and accessible employment, and also ensuring equal remuneration for work of equal value. And secondly, to ensure the supported wage system is modified to secure correct assessment of wages of persons in supported employment, including ADEs. Commissioner, some of the concerns raised with the Royal Commission about the impact of segregated employment include the following. First, whether the early placement of young people with an intellectual disability into segregated day programmes and sheltered employment options reduces their later opportunities for full economic participation. Secondly, the limited pathways to transition to open employment. Ms Mitra from the NDI will tell you on Wednesday that in the financial year 2020 to 2021, 295 NDIS participants self-reported as transitioning from an ADE to open employment. That constitutes 1.7%. A third issue is about service providers and their dual role to provide supports, but also to be the employer. And this is particularly the case when the service provider also provides accommodation as well as employment. Commissioners, this is a concern that you raised in your recent Commissioners' Report concerning Public Hearing 13 and Sunnyfield Disability Services. In the report that you released last week on the 5th of April, you noted that Sunnyfield provides employment services for 195 supported employees at three ADEs. And when the Sunnyfield CEO was asked whether the 195 supported employees form part of the overall workforce, Commissioners, you've recorded that those 195 employees are additional to the 1,174 Sunny employees generally. So in effect, people in supported employment at Sunnyfield were not treated as Sunnyfield employees. A fourth issue is low wages and welfare dependency contributing to poverty and exploitation. The fifth is the place of ADEs in changing labour markets. We see in Australia increased casualisation and the onset of big economy. The way in which we do work is changing, and the question is whether ADEs are also up for these changes? And if not, what is the impact on people working in ADEs? A further consideration is also the move towards corporate responsibility. And as the Commissioners are aware, there are new laws dealing with modern slavery, which brings transparency to supply chains. Many of, many people who work in ADEs are part of supply chains. And so there may be cause to start to think about the issues around corporate responsibility and transparency in supply chains being applicable to ADEs. There is, of course, the issue of overall accountability and who regulates ADEs. There is an issue about the representation of people with disability as recipients of services, but also employees being represented on the boards of ADEs and part of the management. There are issues around complaint handling and dispute resolution, including access to legal representation and access to justice through the courts. And of course, as you've said, Chair, there is the importance of hearing about what has worked and what is positive, and not in any recommendations to lose what has worked well. But finally, there's the opportunity to consider alternative models. And the Commissioners will recall Scott Conley from the ACTU, who gave evidence at Public Hearing 19. And he told you about the ACTU's new disability policy. That policy deals extensively with supported wages. It advocates for the replacement of wage assessment tools and alternative models. And the ACTU's disability policy expressly refers to developments in the United States, including the state of Vermont, which moved away from segregated employment settings and the legalisation of subminimum wages to new models. So there's much for the Royal Commission to consider. But turning to this hearing, over the next three days, you'll hear from a number of people with disability who work or have worked in ADEs. You'll very shortly hear from Philip Shulman. He'll be here in the Hearing Room in Sydney. He has been a hardworking and dedicated employee over many years. He's worked in the same ADE on two occasions, but he's also had work experience in open employment. Mr Shulman attended a high school for deaf and blind young people. And we expect that you will hear that he did not think that his school was a good stepping stone to prepare him for work. Mr Shulman will tell you about his time working at an ADE. And he's generally positive about his time there, but has experienced frustration at the lack of interpreters. Mr Shulman has also enjoyed his experiences in open employment. And when considering which employment setting is more suited to him, Mr Shulman will tell you that he prefers the pay in open employment, but feels safer in the ADE environment around other people with disability. And later today, we'll move to the Brisbane Hearing Room, and you'll hear from Marty. That's a pseudonym. Marty was born in Afghanistan. He travelled to Australia as a refugee. He is blind and his first language is Dari, and he has limited understanding of English. He will give evidence with the assistance of a Dari interpreter. And Marty will tell you about his attempts to obtain employment in Australia and his experiences in an ADE, in which he worked for about three months commencing in 2020. He describes the work that he undertook as being heavy duty, and it included sorting through packaging and recycling. In exchange for that work, he was paid $3.70 an hour for the first three months. He will talk about his efforts during that period to have his wages increased, only to be told in February 2021 that his wage would only increase to $10 an hour for the next 12 months, and it might increase to $15 an hour thereafter. Marty subsequently resigned, and he's still searching for a new job. Today, you'll also hear from some parents of people who work in ADEs. That's Kate and Gert. Kate's daughter Emily works at an ADE and has done so for the past 17 years. Gert's adult children, Fred and Springer, worked at an ADE for 24 and 23 years respectively, but they no longer work at that ADE. Kate and Gert will talk about the positive aspects of their children's employment. And both of them acknowledge that the opportunity for their children to work has had a positive impact for the whole of their family. Gert is the mother of five, and she says that having the opportunity for her children to work also provided a form of respite. However, Kate and Gert will speak about some of their concerns, including the conditions of the workplace and personal care tasks required to be carried out by Springer and Emily. Some of the themes that arise for both Kate and Gert include inadequate support for their children transitioning from school to work, inadequate opportunities to progress, which arise from the repetitive nature of work, but also the limited assistance in transitioning their work from segregated to open employment. Commissioners, tomorrow you'll hear from Gregory Tucker. He currently works in an ADE, but he's also an advocate with Ballot, a Victorian advocacy organisation for people with intellectual disabilities. Commissioners might recall that Mr Tucker gave evidence last year at Public Hearing 12 concerning the vaccine rollout. And he will tell you about his work experience and the nature of the work that he's doing at his current ADE. He will also tell you about his ambitions and wishes for the future. Tomorrow, you'll also hear from Mark and from Tay. They are both currently employed with the ADE known as Bedford Group. And I'll just call them Bedford for present purposes. Mark has worked for Bedford for about 30 years, and in Tay's case, for around 20 years. Mark started at Bedford within a relatively short period of completing secondary school. The Royal Commission will hear from each of Mark and Tay separately about their employment with Bedford, including their experiences with the individual training plans and wage assessments. Tay is likely to tell you about experiences with the changes that have come about as a result of Bedford transitioning to the NDIS and the NDIS new employment model. He will probably tell you that he found it confusing and stressful. Some of the key issues that arise from the evidence from Mark and Tay is their perspectives on whether they feel they are paid a fair wage for the work that they perform, and their concerns about access to training opportunities in their workplace. Tay wants to get a job in open employment, which he believes he can do with the right type of support. Then on Wednesday, you'll hear from Anthony Reed. He went straight from education in a special school to an ADE, and he's worked at the same ADE for 25 years. He enjoys his work at the ADE, but like Mr Tucker, he is also an advocate with Ballot, and he too participated in the hearing last year concerning the COVID vaccine rollout. Commissioners, there'll be some other witnesses, and during the next three days, you'll hear from Catherine McAlpine, the CEO of Inclusion Australia, Australia, the national peak body for persons with intellectual disability. Ms McAlpine gave evidence at Public Hearing 9 about the employment experiences of people with intellectual disability generally. And it's expected that she'll speak this week about the employment of people with intellectual disability in the segregated employment settings in ADEs. She'll build upon the evidence that she gave at Public Hearing 9 to describe how low and stereotyped expectations, the limited availability of independent information for people with disability and their family, and the structured systems and processes established to support people with disability, including intellectual disability, operate together to produce the results seen in a recent NDI report. Ms McAlpine will tell you about Inclusion Australia's perspective regarding the differences between open and segregated settings and the significance of those differences for people with intellectual disability over the course of their life. She'll also talk about Inclusion Australia's perspectives on the key considerations for the future. It is also important, Commissioners, that you have the opportunity to hear from the service providers. And Bedford, the employer of Mark and Tay, will participate in this hearing. Mr Myron Mann, Bedford's present CEO, will give evidence. Bedford has operated since 1945, primarily in South Australia, and it operates over 14 different sites. It's one of Australia's largest employers of people with disability in an ADE setting. It employs, and there's two numbers, either 1,060 or 1,100 people with disability. The majority of the employees, some 630, are people with intellectual disability. And Mr Mann will tell you that 70% of their workers are men. 14% of the workers work full-time and 86% work part-time. And the longest-serving employee of Bedford has worked at Bedford for 50 years. In terms of the wages paid to employees with disability at Bedford, Mr Mann says that the lowest-paid worker is paid $2.37 per hour, and the highest-paid worker is on an hourly rate of $23.85. But the median average hourly rate is $5.48. Bedford employs people with disability to work in packaging, manufacturing, commercial landscaping and commercial cleaning. For its manufacturing work, which you may hear about, the preparation and development of flat pack furniture, Bunnings is its largest customer. Now Bedford made a submission to the Royal Commission's Issues Paper on Employment, which I've referred to a little earlier. And a copy of Bedford's submission is available on the Bedford website, but also the Royal Commission's website. Bedford wanted the Royal Commission to be aware of the issues that arise for service providers in the transition to the NDIS. There are both challenges and positive aspects to the transition. It raises its concern about unfunded supports, the complexity of wage assessment tools, wages and the relationship with the disability support pension. In his statement, Mr Mann acknowledges that ADEs have not traditionally been established, structured or funded, with the primary or formal focus on transitioning to open employment, and that Bedford does not have a specific policy dealing with the transitioning of supported employees to open employment. Bedford is a member of the National Disability Service, NDS. And on Wednesday, you'll hear from the CEO, Ms Lee, and from the Head of Employment, Ms Langford, of National Disability Services. It is the peak body for non-government disability services organisation, and it represents over 1,100 service providers. The NDIS members have a presence in every state and territory in Australia, and they will share their perspective of their members who operate ADEs. They have a position that supported employment, which is the expression they use to describe work in ADEs, should remain a legitimate and viable option as part of the continuum of employment options for people with disability if they are eligible and they choose to access it. They see ADEs as, quote, "an option for those who are unlikely to be able to gain or maintain mainstream employment." In relation to the impacts on the NDS members having to pay supported employee wages, NDS has expressed the view that all supported employment services would be forced to cease their current operations if they were to pay their workers full award rates. NDS will tell you that the removal of supported employment could result in a large number of supported employees being marginalised from the labour force. And this consideration, along with other impacts on supported employees and their families, will need to be carefully considered when planning any process of transition. And they will speak to you about the NDS industry vision. On Wednesday, you'll hear again from Ms Debbie Mitchell from DSS. You'll recall she appeared recently at Public Hearing 21, and Ms Gerry Mitra from the NDI, and you'll recall she participated at Public Hearing 19. We propose to examine the transition of ADEs from DSS to the NDI and the role of the NDI funding models, particularly with respect to the protection of the rights of NDIS participants as employees. We will ask the NDI about its expectations with respect to transition models, and some of the matters identified in the responses to the Issues Paper. Importantly, we'll focus on the rights and the protection of those rights of people with disability. Commissioners, we also received in the preparation of the hearing a statement from Ms Sandra Parker, the Fair Work Ombudsman. We will not hear from her in person this week, but you'll recall Ms Parker gave evidence at Public Hearing 19. In her statement for this hearing, she said that the Fair Work Ombudsman does not routinely identify whether an organisation is an ADE. But she says that over the past three financial years, the Fair Work Ombudsman has undertaken 43 investigations of ADEs, of which 31 have been in the financial year 2020 to 2021. These investigations have resulted in three enforcement actions and the recovery of over $24 million in underpayments for 6,477 employees. Commissioners, the focus of this hearing is an opportunity to listen and to understand the experience of people with disability. It is not the purpose of this hearing to make any judgement about the choices people with disability or their families may make. Some of the evidence may be distressing, and the Royal Commission encourages those watching, whether by the web stream or in person, to be mindful that the topics may be upsetting and we encourage those to seek support in that respect. And we have up on the screen the content warning together with the telephone numbers for the National Counselling Referral Service, Lifeline and Beyond Blue. Commissioners, for this public hearing, we will not ask the Royal Commission to make any adverse findings with respect to any individual experiences of people with disability who work in ADEs. For this hearing, the Royal Commission will not be making findings as to whether a particular person or employer breached the law or breached the policy. The Royal Commission does not operate as a substitute for the Fair Work Commission, the Fair Work Ombudsman or local complaint processes or conducting internal investigations. However, this public hearing will contribute to the Royal Commission's ongoing work in examining violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation of people with disability in employment and economic participation. So can I conclude with a reminder about the protection of witnesses? There are provisions in the Royal Commission's Act that have a very clear objective of protecting witnesses who give evidence before the Commission. In particular, I draw attention to section six M of the Act, which provides that any person who uses, causes or inflicts any violence, punishment, damage, loss or disadvantage to any person on account of the person having appeared as a witness, given evidence or produced documents to the Royal Commission, that person commits an indictable offence. But can I make a further reminder, and that is section six capital N of the Act? It makes it an offence for any employer who dismisses any employee from his or her employment or prejudices any employee in his or her employment for or on account of the employee having appeared as a witness before the Royal Commission, giving evidence before the Royal Commission or producing any document or information to the Royal Commission. And with those reminders, I think, commissioners, we're taking a short break, we'll reconstitute the hearing room after morning tea and you'll then hear from Philip Schulman.
Thank you very much. Shall we adjourn until eleven oh five Sydney Brisbane time? And that's ten thirty five Adelaide time.
Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes.
Thank you Chair and good morning Chair and good morning Commissioners. The first witness in this public hearing is Philip Schulman. Philip will be giving evidence today about some aspects of his schooling and work life with a focus on his experience working at an ADE. Philip has also worked in open employment. The ADE's area of business include contract packing and assembly work. And Philip worked at this ADE on two occasions. On the first occasion for three years and the second for seven years. Hello Philip and thank you for sharing your experiences at the Royal Commission.
Ms McGon, just before you go on, Mr Schulman, I'd like to thank you on behalf of the Royal Commission for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence today. We appreciate the assistance you are giving us by sharing your experiences with us. Just to ensure that you know where everybody is, you probably already know, but just to be sure. We have Commissioner Mason is joining the hearing from the hearing room from Alice Springs. Commissioner Galbally is joining the hearing from Melbourne and of course I'm in the same hearing room as you are and as Ms McGon. But thank you very much. Yes.
Thank you Chair. Philip, I'd like to start by asking you about your schooling. You started primary school at Darlington in Sydney and then you moved to a school in North Rocks.
That is correct.
Was that a school for children with disabilities at North Rocks?
Yes, it was for people who were deaf.
And you boarded there, didn't you Philip, until you were about sixteen years old?
Yeah, I was boarding there five days a week. Till I was about sixteen, that's correct.
And did you feel supported at school Philip?
No, it was okay. The teachers weren't very good, to be honest, and they weren't very good educators.
Did you feel as though your high school prepared you for work?
Not really. Look, they're pretty lazy, to be honest. They're lazy to round. We basically had to fend for ourselves. We had to do everything ourselves, really.
And with regards to work, did the teachers help you to decide what sort of work to get into?
No, not really.
What about choosing a particular type of job? Was anything done by the teachers to help you with that?
My mum is the one that sat down and talked with me. The first time I went to to even go get the dole at Centrelink. It was all that, it was all with mum. I was sixteen, she took me there and we had a discussion and that's how I got my job. It was pretty good, it was like two weeks and there I was.
Well, when you did leave school Philip, you had quite a few jobs, but I want to ask you first about your first job. And I understand that was in nineteen seventy two when you worked in manufacturing.
That is correct.
What did you do in that job?
So I was making berrymen, so furniture, tables, beds, cupboards, all that kind of stuff. So it was manufacturing.
And was that in?
So yeah, just doing like bandsawing stuff, cutting things to size, circular saws, the doors, all those sorts of things. There was a whole lot of stuff to do.
And Philip, was that job in open employment?
That was in open employment, yeah. So working with all these hearing people.
And did you recall, do you recall what your pay rate was in that job?
Twenty eight dollars a week, twenty eight dollars a week, a few years ago though.
And I understand you left that job though because it was a bit too far to travel, is that right?
Yeah, on the bus. It was a long way to go.
And after that job, you did some study at TAFE and attained a certificate in mechanics?
That's right, a certificate in mechanics at Danone Wooligong.
Now, I just want to jump ahead a bit and talk to you about the ADE where you worked. So you, the first time you worked at that ADE was between the years of two thousand and six and two thousand and nine?
That is correct.
Philip, how did you get that job?
So I went to TAFE first and that's when I did all that study and did all the mechanics, did the motor mechanic stuff. So did that for a year. And the boss looked and said, oh look, you're pretty good at this. And that's how I ended up getting the job at work. All these other hearing people, they talk too much. I was always focused on my work, looking at what I was doing. I got taught pretty well then. I really enjoyed it.
Was there someone who identified the role at the ADE for you?
Centrelink again. Centrelink's the one that told me to go there.
And was there anyone within Centrelink in particular who assisted you to get that job?
No, it was always random people just at Centrelink. And they all looked on the computers and see what, see what jobs were available and that's where we found it.
All right. So when you first started working at this ADE, how many hours were you working?
I was earning seventy two dollars a week. So seventy two, sorry, seventy two dollars fortnightly. So I was working eight hours, eight hours a day.
Okay.
Five days a week.
Did you start on five days a week or did you work up to five days?
Initially, it was three days a week. And that was like the seventy two and the boss, I think, was testing me to see how I went. And then I went to four days a week. And that was over a couple of months. And then I went to five days a week and then just worked five days a week from then on.
And when you started Philip, do you remember what your pay rate was?
So yeah, seventy two dollars a fortnight.
And as an hourly rate?
Yeah, I was still getting my pension too. So I was doing work stuff and then the pension stuff. I think it worked out to be five dollars sixty five an hour.
And so just to be clear, the amount of money that you were earning meant that it did not affect you receiving your DSP, is that right?
Yeah, that's right. I asked, I asked Centrelink if I was earning enough and what I had to might be and they said that I have, there's no tax worries about that whatsoever because it was in the disability employment.
And did you get pay increases as you went along?
So for the first three months, it was the same and then it sort of went up almost every three months after that.
And by the time you finished in that first time at the ADE, do you remember what your hourly pay rate was?
Oh, let me think how much was hourly. So I got a hundred and seventy eight. Let me think. I think it worked out to be maybe thirteen dollars, thirteen, fourteen dollars an hour, thereabouts.
And what sort of work were you doing at the ADE Philip?
Just packing. Just doing packing, like all sorts of things in boxes, like you can imagine, was it packing Easter, Easter bags at Easter time, all that kind of stuff. So a whole lot of people with disabilities working there. We used to always come to the Royal Easter Show. So I was a couple of weeks there and then the boss would say, all right, we're going to go do something different. I might be taping, I might be doing some stamps, like you know, big boxes of stamps and taking them up. So I used to have a big stack and just working around it.
And did the type of work that you were doing remain similar over the time that you were there, the first time you were at the ADE?
Yeah, look, it was all the same. It was all good. You know, if things hadn't come over like on a ship or whatever it might be, sometimes I ran, ran out of stuff to do. But so I had to wait and then once they got delivered, they'd let me know what I was going to do. So I'd have to stop one particular project and go work on something else and do something else and make something, whatever it might have been.
Did you feel as though you got a chance to learn new skills? Or do different tasks?
No, no, it was all good. Yeah, I was happy to do anything. I was happy to do all sorts of different tasks. There was nothing sameness about it. I know some people, some deaf people I've spoken to said it was really, really boring. But I was like, I wanted to have a job. I was happy to have a job. And so like, you know, once I finished that project, whatever it might be, I ran out of stuff. I've got to ask the boss to do something different.
And so did you like your work there?
Yeah, I liked work.
And I understand that you had to leave the ADE the first time because of your cochlear implants.
Yeah, the cochlear implant caused me to fall. So I fell over three times. I actually got taken to hospital down in Liverpool and Campbelltown. So going to those hospitals and they found out that there was something to do with there, something to do with the bionic ear. I've got an appointment tomorrow even now to talk about it because I want to, I want to go on. Better go on the waiting list to hopefully get rid of it. I'm better off without it, I reckon. I'm not happy with it.
But that was the, the reason why you had to leave that job, is that right?
Yeah, that's right. The cochlear, yeah, made it hard for me to work. So I had some really bad vertigo.
I see.
And that's what caused me to fall. So I just thought that vertigo, that's from the cochlear.
And how did you feel having to leave the job because of that reason?
Oh, look, it was what it was. I'm look, I'm happy in my own little world. I'm an old man now. I'm sixty seven. So yeah, I'm all right. Age catches up with you though.
All right. Well, I'd like to talk to you now about one of your next jobs, which was in the panel beating business. And I understand you were in that job for about six months in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve?
Yep, six months as a casual. At two thousand and twelve it was.
Two thousand and twelve. Now, what did you do in that job Philip?
So I washed cars. I did mechanical stuff, just helped him out, put some parts on, sort of take parts off. You know, it was a bit dented or whatever it might have been, sort of stretched it out and did what we had to do. So I took it up and gave it to the different guys in the shop.
And did you enjoy that work?
So yeah, the boss would just tell me where to go, like there might be like a wreckers, whatever. Especially when they were the eight, it was great. And driving them around, they're a bit dented and stuff. Luckily, the police never pulled me over. I just got told to do what I had to do. I had a hearing person follow me, one of the other staff guys. And we dropped the car off and do whatever we had to do. And then the day after, we sort of reheat it and do what we had to do with it. Yeah, that's right, Rees V. Sorry, thank you.
And Philip, did?
Yeah, the boss was pretty good there. He was nice. I liked him.
And did you enjoy the work itself Philip?
Yeah, I did. But it was cold, it rained and because it wasn't always in the shelter, it was really cold hands. It was hard work sometimes, especially washing the cars. But yeah, I was only six months there.
And was that five days a week?
Yes, it was. Yeah, five days a week.
And do you remember the, the rate of pay that you were receiving?
Oh. So it was about thirty dollars an hour?
And that was in open employment?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, it was open employment. Yeah, they were, you know, and the colleagues were pretty good. They would always teach each other at lunchtime and stuff. They were a good bunch of blokes to work with.
Do you know why that job came to an end though Philip?
Yeah, I was only there six months as a casual because apparently the boss couldn't afford me anymore. I think he was getting like a Centrelink benefit or something to have me work there, but that stopped, so we couldn't afford to keep you there.
Now, you returned to the ADE in two thousand and twelve.
Yes, that's right.
Were you doing a similar sort of work when you returned the second time?
That was a bit different. Things had changed a little bit, which I found interesting. It was a bit new to me. And changes change and still liked work.
And when you returned back the second time in two thousand and twelve, do you remember what your rate of pay was when you commenced again?
It basically was what it was before, five dollars sixty five cents an hour. And then that's just the way it was.
Do you recall any discussions about starting back at the base wage? Or the base rate?
No, they, they just told me that that's what was going to happen, the five dollars sixty five. I said, but what about the previous payers? They said, no, it's because you left. And then I've come back, but I'm going to start again.
And do you recall the highest amount that you were receiving just before you left the ADE?
I'm trying to remember how much it was an hour. It was turned out to be maybe twenty five dollars an hour. So it was about five hundred dollars thereabouts a week. So it was about twenty five dollars an hour. So, sorry, five hundred, five hundred and three dollars a fortnight it was. So it built up over the seven years, but then I kept falling over again. So I was really disappointed. I would have liked to have kept working to get a higher rate.
I understand that the highest rate could have been twelve dollars an hour. Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So was it twenty five dollars an hour or twelve dollars an hour?
No, sorry. Sorry, no, no, you're right. It was twelve dollars an hour. I got a bit confused there. You're right. It was twelve dollars an hour.
Philip, do you think you should have been paid more at the ADE?
Oh yeah? Look, it all depends on the boss, doesn't it?
Did the rate of pay that you're receiving make it difficult for you financially?
Oh, look, I lived in housing commission. My rent, so rent was pretty cheap. So I wasn't too worried. We managed with food and things like that, electricity, you know, phone, water rates, you know, the housing commission did it all for us. They just automatically did that as a settling deduction, as an automatic direct debit. So I didn't have to worry about it.
What are?
No, there's no problems.
What about your appliances, Philip? Did, were you able to buy them or did you have to do something else?
Yeah, yeah, we had to save up and buy them. Like even, I mean, last, last year, I bought a new washing machine and dryer and stuff like that. They're all my things. Just the car, still going to pay off the car. About one more year to go.
Okay. And when?
I can't wait to get rid of that one.
And when you were working at the ADE Philip, did you have to be careful with your money when you went shopping for food?
Yeah, and that's what I used to do. I always looked at the cheap stuff and had to really make sure I was in control of my budget. So I'd see what I had and what I needed to buy. I'd write a list down and just see what I could ever get that was cheap. I managed. Yeah, we were okay. I wasn't very blasé with my money at all. I was always very cautious and very careful, especially with the bank.
And in your work at the ADE Philip, do you feel as though your disability was supported?
There were, there were two other deaf people there as well. So we'd always have a chat at lunch and do that kind of stuff. It was always just really just the three of us. Then we'd go work in our separate areas. There were, there were two other deaf people there as well, so we'd always have a chat at lunch and do that kind of stuff, it was always just really just the three of us, then we'd go work in our separate areas.
What about um the workplace itself? Did it offer you interpreting supports?
No, nothing like that, no. Now, the boss wouldn't do it, because he wouldn't, he wouldn't, he wouldn't wanna pay for it. I could just tell, they just didn't want, he couldn't be bothered, didn't wanna pay. And so there were a few communication breakdowns sometimes, everyone would be talking and we'd sit there going, we don't know what's going on.
Did that affect you at work meetings?
It did, yeah, I felt stuck, really. Like, the three of us, all three of us deaf guys would sit there going, we've got no idea what they're talking about. It was a bit boring for us, to be honest.
How did that make you feel, not being able to understand what was going on in work meetings?
I mean, we should have got an interpreter in. I would rather know, because the fact that we're deaf and we can't talk at all, we were very confused about what was going on, always communication breakdowns, we, we wanted the access.
But Philip, how, how did that make you feel, if you can remember?
Um, a bit frustrated, a bit annoyed, yeah, just a little bit.
And what about when you were learning a new skill, for example, or learning a new task? Were there interpreters provided then?
No. Like, the boss had come to and write things down, and, and English isn't, isn't, I'm not very fluent, it's a second language for me, I'm not very good at the English, so we'd write things down, and even that was confusing sometimes.
And did that create any difficulties for you at all in doing your tasks?
Yeah, it did.
Apart from the interpreting, oh, sorry.
Like, after, after work and things like that, if we'd run out of a project, whatever I have to do, I'd say, I'm done with, I've done what I have to do here, and he'd move me off to a different area, and so, yeah, I'd just go to the boss and he'd just move me on.
Do you think it would be better, uh, had there been interpreters there for you and your colleagues?
Oh, yeah, definitely. I'd much rather have an interpreter in here, because that way we'll know what was going on, and we can all communicate, and then when they, when they've gone, at least we know what we're doing and we can sort of self-direct what we wanna do.
Is that something that you would recommend all workplaces who have people who are deaf working there should have?
Definitely, definitely.
Philip, was there anything else um at the A D E that you found difficult or that you did not like?
Yeah, I mean, there are a few things there. There, there were frustrations that popped up, because, mainly because of the lack of the interpreting, so we just sort of worked and went about our own way.
Can you think about what some of those things were?
Oh, like, sometimes it was, like, boring at work, like, we'd work what we're gonna do, and then they'd talk to us, and there was no one to really communicate with, and we wouldn't write things down, like some of the other staff people. Um, we felt ignored sometimes.
Philip, can you tell the commissioners um the sort of things that you did like about working at the A D E?
Yeah, I mean, I liked the packing stuff. Yeah, I liked, you know, doing the, the taping up of the boxes and stuff, there was a variety of things to do. Yeah, there was some, you know, wood boxes that we could work with, there, there was a lot, there were lots of things to do, so that was okay. It was always something different to do, it was a nice big factory and just doing different stuff. Like, we used to do, like, shampoo, packing, like, the bottles and stuff, and the machine used to pick them up and do all that kind of fun stuff. So, yeah, there was a lot of stuff, you know, a lot of people working in the factory.
But you had to retire again because of your implants, is that right, Philip?
Yeah, the cochlea, the boss just went, no, you're finished. Then the hospital had said, no, you need to stop working, and, and I just had to accept that, went to my G P and explained that the cochlea was causing me to fall, and the doctor did some reports, wrote some letters, and went, no, no more work for you, unfortunately.
And is it the case that you wanna return to work?
Yeah, I wanted to, but it was just too much going on, and then with the vertigo, I think, with the cochlea, I think, maybe if I have the cochlea removed, that might help, but, yeah, I was just getting too dizzy at work and, and I had to take too many breaks. I wanna get rid of the cochlea.
Do you think when you do have um the implant removed, that you might be able to return to work?
Who knows? I'd like to try. Yeah, see how we go. I'd like to do it.
And do you think that you'll return to the A D E or somewhere else?
Oh, it's hard, it's hard work, there's a lot of work that has to be done, and it was a bit pushy towards the end there, like in, in open employment, but when you're at the, the A D E, it's pretty easy, it's light, it's easy for someone of my age. Like, if you go to open employment, it can be a bit stricter and a bit harsher. Um, so the A D E, I was happy there, it was good, it was nice and easy.
Philip, do you prefer the um pay that you receive in open employment compared to the pay that you received at the A D E?
Oh, look, I didn't mind, I was still getting my pension, so I could still work and get my pension, so I was pretty happy. It didn't really worry me.
And if you think about your experiences in open employment compared to your experience at the A D E, where would you prefer to work?
Um, look, that's hard to know, like, open employment's good, it's good, but it's hard work, you know, there was a lot of, you know, washing cars, and I'd be out in the rain sometimes, and it's, I don't think I'd wanna go back to that, but at the A D E, it was good, it was sheltered, I was always inside, and there's nothing really to worry about there.
Philip, you've made, um, I understand you have some recommendations uh that you'd like to share with the commissioners, particularly in relation to managers interpreting for their staff and learning.
Yes, definitely. I think the hearing people need to learn to sign too. Um, some of the people that were there could sign a little bit, and that was good. Um, so there was one deaf person there that was sort of teaching them how to do it, they had a book there and they were sort of practicing the signs.
But was it enough to get by and properly understand your work?
No, not really. Um, that one deaf person there, that deaf person, who was more hearing impaired than he was deaf, so he sort of helped me, and he would almost interpret a little bit for me, even though he was hearing impaired himself.
And just finally, Philip, can you tell the commissioners why is it so important that managers and people working with employees who are deaf should learn to sign?
It's, it's really hard for us sometimes, like, hearing people get to talk to all each other all the time, and, you know, and a lot of these people have probably never met a deaf person, so they don't really understand what it is, so I, I think for them to sign would be a better way for them to understand us, because it goes in one ear and out the other, well, that's literally, we don't actually see, we don't understand what they're saying.
Well, thank you, Philip, and thank you very much for giving evidence at this Royal Commission.
No worries, thank you very much.
The chair, the chair or the other commissioners might have some questions.
Mister Shawman, if it's okay with you, I'll ask the commissioners if they have any questions of you. And first, I'll ask Commissioner Galbally whether she has any questions for you. I think you're on mute, Commissioner Galbally.
Sorry, um, I wanted to thank you very much for appearing, I don't have any questions, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Commissioner Mason?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I just have one question. Um, thank you very much, uh, Philip, for your evidence today. When you were talking about your housing arrangements and paying, where you talked, you said, we, um, so I just wanted to know if you were supporting?
I was, I was married, I've now got an ex-wife, so when I say where, it was about me and my wife. So, obviously, if we were separated there, we could, we could, less a pension. So, yeah, I get the house to myself now, I pay less, but when we were together, I had to pay more then.
Okay, thank, um, just, did that provide um some financial pressure in the work that you were doing at the time at the A D E, um, in being able to cover all your living expenses?
I mean, we were pretty flexible, we were, we were pretty easy, we managed okay, we sort of went halves in food and did all that kind of stuff, my ex-wife and I, wait, electricity, didn't really have too many problems, but then she ditched me and now I'm my own, anyway. That, that happened last year.
Thank, thank you very much.
I would also like to thank you for uh giving evidence today. Your evidence has been very helpful and extremely interesting, if I might say so, so thank you very much for coming to the commission. I would also like to-
And thank you very much for listening, and thank you very much for what you're doing.
The only thing I would add to your evidence is sixty seven is not old, you need to wait a few years before you consider yourself old.
No, you're lucky, if you flip the numbers, I'm seventy six and that does make me old.
I'd also like to thank the translator for a very lively translation, it perhaps reflecting your personality, Philip, but it was a very lively translation. Thank you very much to both of you, thank you.
No worries, thank you very much, honour.
Thank you, Chair. Is now convenient time for a short break?
Yes, how long should we break for?
Ten minutes or so, if that's convenient.
All right, well, it's now um eleven thirty five, more or less, Sydney, Brisbane time, let's resume at eleven fifty, Sydney, Brisbane time, which would be ten, uh, eleven twenty, Adelaide time, thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Mister Fraser.
Commissioners, the next witness is giving evidence under the pseudonym Marty. As Marty's first language is Dari, an accredited translator and interpreter is here to interpret the proceedings, which I ask that you do now.
Yes, thank you. I understand that the interpreter and Marty have both been sworn or affirmed, as the case may be.
Yes, that's so.
All right. Uh, could I explain to Marty, although it may already have been explained, first of all, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission in Brisbane in order to give your evidence, we greatly appreciate your assistance. There are three commissioners who are sitting uh on this hearing. Uh, we are in different locations. First, we have Commissioner Galbally, who is in Melbourne. And we have Commissioner Mason, who is joining the hearing from Ellis Springs. I am in the Brisbane hearing room. Mister Fraser, of course, is with you in the Brisbane hearing room, so thank you very much again. Yes, Mister Fraser.
I'll allow the interpreter to interpret that, thank you, Chair. You're most welcome, Chair. Marty's statement dated one April two thousand and twenty two is in English, and it was read out to Marty in Dari by an interpreter. Marty confirmed that the contents of the statement were true and correct, and that is recorded on the last page of the statement. Yes. With the assistance of the interpreter, I'm just gonna read his statement. Can we start at paragraph two at the heading background? I'll ask the interpreter to read paragraphs two to seven in Dari and then in English. But um I'll read it in Dari first. Four, as paragraph Uh, I'll read the, the statement now in English, paragraph two to seven. Paragraph two, I was born in Afghanistan in nineteen seventy nine, my first language is Dari. Paragraph three, I arrived in Australia in twenty fourteen with the assistance through the U N C R, which is the United Nations High Commissioner for Refugees. My mother and sister also moved to Australia at the same time. Paragraph four, since childhood, I've, I've had vision impairment, I am blind. Paragraph five, I had limited education before coming to Australia, I completed year seven in Iran. In about twenty, twenty or five, I went back to Afghanistan, and there was no opportunity for me to continue school. Paragraph six, in Afghanistan, when I was an adult, I studied literacy and numeracy course and attended English language classes for a short period of time. I stopped due to the economic situation. I started a business with a few others, selling fruit in the market. I ran that business with my business partners for a few years. Paragraph seven, I heard the situation was better in Pakistan, so after a few years, I moved from Afghanistan to Pakistan. I opened and managed my own fruit business in Pakistan from about the end of twenty eleven until about early twenty fourteen, when I came to Australia. Thank you. I, I think we can dispense with the paragraph numbers. The next section of the statement addresses how Marty came to find a job at an Australian Disability Enterprise, which is referred to as the A D E. I ask that the interpreter read paragraphs eight to fifteen in Dari and then in English. Find a Finding a job at A D E. When I arrived in Australia, life was very difficult because my mother, sister and I did not speak English. We also did not have a car, so it was hard to get around. In Australia, I spent about three years studying an English language course, which I did not complete. I can now understand English speakers to some extent, but I cannot speak English well.
So much that he will be turned on. I, Barha, as part of the EDE, as the chairman and supervisor, asked what time my salary is going to be. During November 2020, the employee of the Hema team sent an email to the head of the EDE. He asked if the salary was going to be received. During November 2020, the head of the EDE replied to the employee of the Hema team that the EDE is waiting for an agreement. During December 2020, the employee of the Hema team repeatedly sent an email to the head of the EDE. And he tried to get my salary. And he told me that he was going to go to Afghanistan and Australia. I don't know if the head of the EDE has responded to this. At this time, I thought that it's hard work and I'm going to do it better. I tried to do all the work and then I got tired of it. Because I tried to do it faster than others. At the end of February 2021, I told them that I wanted my salary. Approximately at the end of February 2021, I had my salary. A person who worked for me came to the EDE. They saw my work. I didn't think they would have done it. Because in what time did I do it? During my salary. A person who worked for me said that my salary was going to be 10 dollars. I said 10 dollars is not enough. I have family. I have to protect them. I said I don't want to lose my salary. I said 21 dollars per hour. And I said that I don't want to lose my salary. I asked the EDE staff about the salary. What kind of salary do you want? And I said that if I have 12 more days, I can afford to pay you 15 dollars. I asked them what is wrong with this. And they said if you pay me back, I will pay you my salary. I think this information is incorrect. And it has no effect on my salary. Then, at the end of the day, I told the EDE staff that I didn't want to do any more work. One of the EDE staff told me to leave the company. After that, I gave a payment to the head of the EDE. During the evening of the day, I asked the EDE staff if my salary was going to be received. The head of the EDE said that it's not my idea. It was in the office. Because I felt that my salary was going to be reduced. I also refused to do it. After I refused, I sent an email to the employee of the Hema team. That I was going to do it again. The employee of the Hema team sent an email to the EDE staff about my salary. That I don't have any interest in doing it. And I'm ready to do it if my salary is better. And the employee of the Hema team is also interested in doing it. I didn't do any training from the EDE. After I tried to do a restaurant, I failed. I'm not working right now. I'm in a bad state. I feel hopeless. I feel that no one will offer me a job with a low salary because of my disability.
Commissioners, we now turn to the final section in the statement of paragraphs 41 to 45. Where Marty wants to tell you about the future. Can those paragraphs be interpreted?
Commissioner Saba, today, the last statement of the document, from paragraph 41 to 45, is being read. And I want you to listen. On about 17th of November 2020, my support worker emailed the head of the EDE. Asking when my wage assessment could be conducted. On about 18th of November 2020, the head of the EDE told my support worker. By email that the EDE was waiting for the assessor to make contact. On about 1 December 2020, my support worker emailed the head of the EDE again. Requesting that my wage assessment be conducted and explaining my wife and child were soon coming to Australia from Afghanistan. I do not know if the head of the EDE emailed back. At this time, I thought that I was working hard and completing my work faster than some of the other workers. I would finish sorting my pallets and then help the workers next to me with his pallet. Also, I would fill up the cage with the recycling faster than some of the other workers. In mid-February 2021, my supervisor said that I would have a wage assessment in one week. In about late February 2021, I had my wage assessment. Someone came to the EDE factory to assess my work. They watched me work. I do not think they timed how long it took me to do my work. On the day of my assessment, the person assisting my work told me that my hourly wage would increase to $10. I said $10 is not enough for me because I have a family to support. I said I had a wife and a child. I asked for at least $21 an hour. I was told something like, no, we cannot pay you $21 an hour. I asked the EDE staff what wage I might get next time my work was assessed. I was told next time in about 12 months, I might get $15 an hour. I asked why and was told something like, if we pay you more, you will lose your centaling payments. I think that information is incorrect because my DSP is the blind pension and is not impacted by my income. Later in the day, after my wage assessment, I said to the EDE staff, I'm not working here any longer. One of the EDE staff members told me to go home. After that, I organized an appointment with the head of the EDE. During our discussion, I asked again if they would increase my hourly rate to $21. The head of the EDE said something like, it's not my decision. That decision is made in the main office. Because I felt that the wage offered to me was unfair, I resigned from my job at the EDE in about late February 2021. After I resigned on 1st of March 2021, the EDE sent an email to my support worker asking if I would return to work. My support worker sent an email back on 3rd of March 2021, saying I was not interested in continuing with the EDE. That I was willing to work as long as I would be paid better. And that my support worker was still searching for some work for me. I was not offered any support or assistance from the EDE in finding a new job. After leaving the EDE, I tried to manage a restaurant. That was not successful and I stopped after 12 days. I'm not working now. Currently, without a job, I feel hopeless. I feel that no one will offer me a job with a fair wage because of my disability.
Commissioners, we now turn to the final section in the statement of paragraphs 41 to 45. Where Marty wants to tell you about the future. Can those paragraphs be interpreted?
Commissioner Saba, today, the last statement of the document, from paragraph 41 to 45, is being read. And I want you to listen. Because I don't like this idea of doing work and I don't want to lose my salary. I feel that the policy of the EDE is a conspiracy of people. And it's not a conspiracy. From my perspective, my salary is 10 dollars. I believe that the less money people have in the EDE is a disadvantage. And I think it's a disadvantage. I hope that Australia has a good example of this. So that it's possible to prove that everyone who works in a conspiracy has been punished. From my perspective, people who have a conspiracy have to suffer punishment. Doing life for me was hard. You have to protect them. For example, I think the government should make it easier for people with disabilities to start a business and to obtain loans without interest. If I start a restaurant, for example, I need a license which costs money. So, an interest-free loan would help me set up my business. I would like to see positive changes in Australia for people with disability.
That's the end of the statement. Commissioners, you'll find a copy of the English version of Marty's statement in Tender Bundle Part A at Tab 1. And the diary version of the statement at Tab 1A. I tendered these statements into evidence and asked that they be marked as Exhibit 22-0 and Exhibit 22-1.
Yes, both of those documents can be admitted into evidence with the markings you have indicated, Mr Fraser.
Commissioner Saba, I want to say that the location of Central Australia has had people from Afghanistan coming for a very, very long time. And people from Afghanistan in Central Australia have had a wonderful relationship with First Nations people. I just want to acknowledge that history and also acknowledge your deep commitment and desire to make a contribution but also to provide for your family. But again, thank you for coming today and giving your evidence. I want to say that I have a good relationship with Australians. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marty, for your evidence today. I actually had one question. If you have met other people who are blind here in Australia who do run their own businesses? If that's been facilitated for you? Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. I want to say that I have a good relationship with Australians. I want to say that I have a good relationship with Australians. And I want to say that I have a good relationship with Australians.
Chair, subsequent questions that the commissioners may have, that is the evidence of this witness.
Yes, thank you very much. Marty, I shall ask my colleagues whether they have any questions of you. First, I shall ask Commissioner Mason.
Make up.
Yes, please do translate.
However, I want to say that I have a good relationship with Australians. And I want to say that I have a good relationship with Australians. And I want to say that I have a good relationship with Australians. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, Marty, for your evidence today. I actually had one question. If you have met other people who are blind here in Australia who do run their own businesses? If that's been facilitated for you? Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. I want to say that I have a good relationship with Australians. I have a good relationship with Australians. Have you had any contacts with anyone? And I do not know if anyone is running a business. I do not know. I don't have any contacts.
If you were able to have those conversations, would that be of assistance to give you some understanding of opportunities available in Australia?
If you're ready, I want to say that I have a good relationship with Australians. 100%, yes.
Marty, I just wanted to say that the location of Central Australia has had people from Afghanistan coming for a very, very long time. And people from Afghanistan in Central Australia have had a wonderful relationship with First Nations people. I just want to acknowledge that history and also acknowledge your deep commitment and desire to make a contribution but also to provide for your family. But again, thank you for coming today and giving your evidence.
I want to say that I have a good relationship with Australians. I have a good relationship with Australians. And I want to say that I have a good relationship with Australians. I want to say that I have a good relationship with Australians. I want to say that I have a good relationship with Australians. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Mason. Marty, I shall now ask Commissioner Galbulay whether she has any questions for you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mason. I want to say that I have a good relationship with Australians.
Thank you. Thank you, Marty. I appreciated your evidence. And I wanted to ask you, with the interest-free loan proposal to set up businesses for people with disabilities. You would imagine paying that loan back over a period of time once the business got going? That's a question. I assume you would, but I'm asking that as a question. Thank you.
Commissioner Galbulay asked me. I want to say that I have a good relationship with Australians. I want to say that I have a good relationship with Australians. I want to say that I have a good relationship with Australians. I want to say that I have a good relationship with Australians. Yes. Yeah, thank you very much. Yes, my intention is also to repay back the loan. Loan without interest. If there's a loan that you don't have to pay back, in my view, I think that will make people lazy. That's my thinking is a loan without interest and yes, that should be repaid.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Marty, I can see from your statement that has been read today. That you are very keen to work for yourself and to support yourself and your family. I'm wondering what kind of training, if any, you think would be helpful to you to obtain a job or perhaps to set up your own business? What sort of training would you like to have available to you?
I want to say that I have a good relationship with Australians. I want to say that I have a good relationship with Australians. I have a good relationship with Australians. But I have a good relationship with businesses. I have a good relationship with businesses. Yeah, I like the idea of learning more. I like that. However, I think the best business now is food, providing food. So that has got very good income. As far as my finding shows.
Training.
Training? For cooking?
No, no. Yeah, you see, with training, you believe that can help you. Training for cooking also. Training for cooking?
Cooking.
They just mentioned. They're asking for training.
I'm sorry. Chair, may I just, I'll just, what his support worker said, should I?
Yes, I understand the support worker was asking you what sort of training, if any training was available. You would like to help you in order to get a job or to set up a business. So, by all means, if there is something you would like to say about the training you would like to receive, please do tell us.
I want to say that I have a good relationship with Australians. 100%, yes.
All right. Thank you very much, Marty. I can do no better, I think, than endorsing what Commissioner Mason and Commissioner Galbulay have said about your coming to us and giving evidence. We are very grateful to you. We appreciate your telling us about your story. And I'm sure on behalf of my colleagues, they would wish to join me and wishing you all the best for your future. And to hope that you will be able to get the employment or to start a business as you wish. And again, thank you so much for sharing your experiences.
I want to say that I have a good relationship with Australians. And I have a good relationship with Australians. I want to say that I have a good relationship with Australians. I want to say that I have a good relationship with Australians. Yeah, I would like to thank the Commission for what it's doing to make improvement in the society. This is a very good thing and if there are positive changes brought about, that's a very good thing for all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Marty, and thank you for those comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Many thanks. Thank you.
Ms Eastman, should we now adjourn for lunch?
Yes, if we can, Commissioners.
And we'll resume then at 1:30 Sydney time, Brisbane time, and 1 PM Adelaide time.
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Ms McMahon.
Thank you, Chair. The Royal Commission will now hear from Gert, who is generously sharing the experiences of her children at an ADE. And her experiences, their mother supporting them in their schooling and work life. Commissioners, you'll be aware that Gert's name and that of her children have not been, sorry, are pseudonyms. And that their actual names have been the subject of a non-publication order. You will also note that the ADE has not been identified either. Gert has made a statement and you'll find that at Volume A, Tab 3. And for your convenience, a transcript of this pre-record is at Tab 5 of that same volume. This pre-recording will last just over 10 minutes. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, yes.
Gert is giving pre-recorded evidence from her home to the Royal Commission in a regional area of Australia. Gert has five children, two of which worked in an ADE. Frederick, who is 43, and Springer, who is 50. Her children worked at this ADE for 24 and 23 years respectively, and they no longer work there. Gert, you made a statement to the Royal Commission dated the 31st of March 2022. Is that right?
Yes, that's right.
And is the contents of that statement true and correct?
Correct.
And in relation to all of the matters that we'll talk about today in your evidence, do you agree to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Now, you stated that Frederick went to a mainstream school until he was 10 and then moved to a school with a special education unit. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And Springer went to a mainstream school too, but then moved to a local special school for about a year. But you stated that you've moved her to a boarding school because you weren't so happy with the opportunities that she was being given at the local school. Is that right?
That's correct.
Can you tell the Royal Commission how Frederick came to work at the ADE?
Frederick wasn't given any help at school. To look for any work experience. And I knew a member of the board and I asked him if he could volunteer for a couple of weeks just to give it a go.
And Springer started a year later. How did she get the job there?
Well, I was at a meeting at the ADE and I just asked if Springer could come and trial there because she was unhappy at the place where she was working.
I see. And did Frederick enjoy his work there?
Yes, definitely.
What did he like about it?
The companionship, the fact that he had to get up and go to work just like his siblings.
And what about Springer? Did she enjoy her work at the ADE?
Yes, she did.
And what did she like about it, Gert?
The same thing, kind of thing, the getting up and going somewhere, having a purpose in life.
And what about for you as her, their mother and the family? Was it important for you and the family that they worked?
Yes, it gave me a little bit of respite and time to myself.
So I understand that the main sort of work that they, your children, did at the ADE was packaging-type work. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And except for towards the end, the work was fairly consistent in terms of the sort of work they did. Is that, is that true?
Yes, it just depended on what was around, what businesses needed work done.
I see. So it was the type of product that might change, but not the work itself. Is that right?
Exactly. That's right.
Now, you've stated in your statement that you did try at times to get Springer into open employment. Did that work out?
No, definitely didn't because I always tried through an employment agency and got nowhere.
And did the ADE do anything to assist Springer to get into open employment?
No, definitely not.
And what about Fred, Frederick? Did he, did you ever try and get him into open employment?
No, I didn't try because he, his disability was far greater than from Springer. And if she couldn't get anything, I knew Frederick couldn't get anything.
In your statement, you've expressed some concerns about some of the personal care tasks that Springer was doing for other supported employees. Such as making tea and coffee, taking people to the toilet and sometimes feeding. What has Springer told you about why she was doing this work?
Well, they were just expected to do it, kind of thing, as part of their job. And she was a willing person, I suppose, because some of them were her friends. She would just do, do it, but I didn't think it was fair that the supervisors expected the more capable employees to do this kind of work.
So you didn't think she should have been doing it?
No, maybe occasionally if something, you know, was necessary, but it was just all the time.
I see. If I could just talk about pay for a moment that your children received, could you please tell us perhaps towards the end of their time at the ADE, what their pay rates were?
Springer's pay rate was just over four dollars and Frederick's was under, between three and four.
Awesome. And is it the case that it would, from when they started, increase over time depending upon annual reviews? Is that how it worked?
Yes, that's how it worked.
And would you attend those reviews?
Yes, definitely.
Was it important for you to attend the reviews?
Yes, I felt it was, that was part of my job was to keep an eye on things and make sure that they were learning new tasks and being made feel beneficial to the organisation.
Something else that you've spoken about, Gert, is the importance of communication. And you've indicated that there was a bit of a decline in the quality of communication over the years. Could you please give the Royal Commission an example of, of what you considered poor communication?
Poor communication, I felt, was because they put signs up on the walls and expect the supported employees to read them and then be able to take the information home to their parents. And in some cases, and well, a lot of cases, they can't read. So how could that information be given to the parents? And the other thing.
Now, please continue, Gert.
And the other thing, when we spoke to the, the committee and the CEO and brought this to their attention, we were told that everything was on Facebook. Well, not everyone is on Facebook. So how, you know, that was a big thing.
I see. And you spoke about signs being posted up for supported employees to gain information. Did Frederick have issues with his reading?
Frederick couldn't read at all.
Awesome. Now, you've told us that Frederick was made redundant from the ADE shortly after twenty twenty and that Spring was offered, offered reduced hours, but decided, decided to leave. How did Springer feel when she was offered the reduced hours, but Frederick was told that he was no longer, had, no longer had a job there?
Can you repeat that question?
Sorry, how did Springer feel when she was offered reduced hours, but Frederick no longer had a job, was made redundant?
Springer was upset. She didn't feel it was, it was good for her to be given work. And, and then, and Frederick wasn't offered any work when he'd actually been there twelve months longer than she had.
Awesome. And what about Frederick? Did he express how he felt about losing his job after so long?
He couldn't understand kind of thing, why, why his sister was allowed to continue at work and he wasn't offered any.
What about now, Gert? What's Springer doing?
She's working at another ADE.
And does she like her new ones?
Loves them, yeah.
Why?
They're kind, considerate and they listen to her and she's been offered lots of opportunities to learn new skills.
And what about Frederick? Is he working now?
Yes, he is. And he's at a different ADE, which makes it very awkward for me. One's at one, one's at other, and there are different days kind of thing, trying to get them all organised.
Are you managing?
Yes, slowly.
Um, Gert, we have read in your statement and so will the Commissioners, the recommendations that you've made in your statement. And I'm sure that the Commissioners will take those into account. But I just wanted to thank you very much for giving evidence today that will be played next week at the Royal Commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for giving me the opportunity.
Yes, Miss.
Chair, I seek to tender three documents. The first is the statement of Gert dated the thirty-first of March twenty twenty-two, which could be marked twenty-two dash two. The second is the pre-record of Gert's evidence dated the fourth of April twenty twenty-two, to be marked twenty-two dash two point one. And the third is the transcript of that pre-record of Gert's evidence from the fourth of April twenty twenty-two to be marked twenty-two dash two point two.
The document will be admitted into evidence and given the markings that have just been indicated.
Thank you, Chair. And perhaps if we could just have a very short break and Ms. Dowsit will return.
Yes, I'll have a short break to reconstitute. Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Miss Dowsit.
Thank you, Chair. The next witness that you will hear from is Ms. Catherine McAlpine. Ms. McAlpine is the CEO of Inclusion Australia. In the room? Do we have Ms. McAlpine? Oh, she's coming, Chair.
I think we have Ms. McAlpine on screen. Thank you very much, Ms. McAlpine, for coming, as it were, to give evidence to the Royal Commission. I think you probably are aware where everybody is, but just in case, I shall let you know, we'll go over it again. Commissioner Galbally joins us from Melbourne and I hope you can see her on a screen. Commissioner Mason is at Alice Springs. I am in the Sydney hearing room along with Ms. Dowsit, who I shall ask, to ask you some questions. And I understand that you have taken the oath of affirmation as the case may be already. Thank you.
But now, Ms. McAlpine, I understand that you are having just an issue with your voice today. So you may sound a little scratchy, but you want the Royal Commission to hear your evidence. So we're going to press on, is that correct?
That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you very much for making yourself available. Now, you gave evidence to the Royal Commission in public hearing nine.
That's correct.
And at that time, Commissioners, the exhibits included a detailed statement from Ms. McAlpine, a copy of her CV, an extract from the omnibus submission prepared by Inclusion Australia and a report entitled Fostering Employment for People with Intellectual Disability: The Evidence to Date. I mention all that by way of background because we're not going to do the, the usual introduction of Ms. McAlpine. Her, her background material is before the, the Commission already. So with, with that introduction, I propose just to, to step straight in to the evidence. Now, Ms. McAlpine, in your evidence in public hearing nine, you introduced us to the language of the polished pathway, which, as I understand it, reflects a life course that Inclusion Australia sees from segregated education through to segregated employment. And it's contributed to by the availability and sources of information and support to people with intellectual disability and their family and also.
Sorry, is this a question or, or a soliloquy? If there's a question, I suggest you put it to Ms. McAlpine. Perhaps she could, Ms. McAlpine will be able to tell us herself what she means by polished pathway. That might be better.
If you could, Ms. McAlpine.
Oh, thank you. Yes. So in previous evidence, I have talked about the polished pathway. And exactly as Council Assisting mentioned, that is about particularly segregation from a very early age into segregated education and the way the systems all work together to make it very easy to stay in those systems and to move from school into segregated, to other segregated settings, including segregated employment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. And can I ask you next, please, Ms. McAlpine, to explain to the Royal Commission just some, some terminology that we will be using in evidence today? And first, open employment, what, what do you understand that to be?
So what you mean, in open employment, we are talking about the regular employment market where people with and without disability work together for, for what we would call proper wages. So the normal awards that are equal to or above the minimum wage.
And Australian disability enterprises or what do you understand that to be?
So an Australian disability enterprise is a type of employment support or it's supposed to be a type of employment support for people with disability. The, in Australian disability enterprises, which we'll all call ADEs, I assume for the rest of the session, are settings that mainly, that are attended mainly by people with an intellectual disability. You've heard some evidence this morning from people with other disabilities, but in fact, more than eighty percent of people in ADEs are people with an intellectual disability. So we see them very much as segregated environments where the, where the people with intellectual disability are sent to work and where pay rates are very low.
And is it correct that the terminology supported employment could also be used to describe ADEs?
This is where it gets complex. Overseas supported employment is usually referred to as people in open employment receiving supports. But in Australia, the term supported employment tends to mean working in an ADE. So sometimes when you read the research and other documents, you've got to really understand which definition of supported employment is in place.
And the final terminology I'd like you to explain, the Inclusion Australia definition of today, is social enterprise.
So a social enterprise is generally regarded as a place where people with and without disability or people with or without disadvantage work together. We believe that that terminology is being co-opted because our understanding of social enterprise is that's where, a place where people are paid properly. So where people are paid at least the minimum wage. And we see the language of social enterprises as being co-opted by Australian disability enterprises because people with disability and people without disability do work together, but not as equals. One of the things that's even come up again this morning is that an ADE is supposed to be an employment support, but you keep hearing the people without disability being described as supervisors. The supervisors who are in charge, not the supporters who are helping me work.
So am I correct to understand that social enterprises then is not a label that Inclusion Australia uses?
Not in regard to ADEs, except in the very rare occasion where people are in fact earning the minimum wage, in which case we would think that was a fair enough description.
If I could ask you now to provide to the Royal Commission Inclusion Australia's perspectives of the differences between open employment, as you've just described it, and segregated employment. Now, I appreciate that's a really big question. So could we start with income levels and wages and the differences in those two environments?
So in open employment, people would earn the relevant, would earn the salary according to their experience and expertise and the relevant award. In an ADE, and it's one of the reasons that we're using the term minimum wage rather than awards, because in ADEs it is legal to pay people against one of the two awards. So we've heard already about the, the SES award where people can earn as little as three dollars fifty an hour or the, through the supported wage system that allows people to be paid as little as two dollars fifty for an hour. So when we talk about open employment, we're talking about people who actually earn the right money. The other thing that we would talk about is that's where job customisation has happened. So for a person with intellectual disability, particularly for a person with intellectual disability, working in open employment, they will have chosen a job according to their skills and interests. In an ADE, basically you go to the local ADE and whatever the business is, that's what happens. If I could just refer very briefly back to Article twenty-seven of the UN Convention that was talked about in the openings. The problems with ADEs is that people do not get to work on an equal basis with others. They don't have the opportunity to earn a living. They don't freely choose their work and they don't have an open inclusive work environment. So all of the elements of Article twenty-seven are not met in an ADE setting, but are met in an open employment setting.
And are you able to describe for the Royal Commission, what is the impact of that difference in, in terms of economic participation?
Well, jobs and income set up our, our lives of independence. We think, we have always thought, Inclusion Australia, that employment is central to an independent and dignified life. It's the way that we pay our bills. So if we, if we have a very low income, that means people can't afford to live anywhere else except possibly a group home or in very unstable accommodation. So we have this ongoing effect that if you don't have an income, you are completely reliant on the pension. You are completely reliant on the jobs that the ADE tell you that you have to do. And then there's this ongoing impact that you're more likely to live a totally segregated life because you're more likely to only be able to afford to live in a group home or can only get the support you need in a group home. You are more likely to get all of those supports from the same provider because you've just heard a parent talk about, you know, how difficult it is when people are in different places and you've got to juggle different service agreements and all the rest of it. So the life admin for the family is very high. And so with all of those systems working effectively against you, the easiest thing to do is to be in a segregated life in the, with the support of a single provider, completely reliant on the, on the disability support pension or a tiny little bit of income and to not actually have much choice and control in any area of your life.
You've spoken about the supported wage system and the SES award and the, the rates of pay that can be paid lawfully under those systems. Can you talk to the Royal Commission about Inclusion Australia's perspective on the relevance of job customisation, as you, you spoke about it before, and productivity and how that links to, to a wage assessment?
Yeah, well, there's a couple of different things there. The SES award is about competency. So it's not actually about productivity. So it sort of puts a different level of judgment on the employee that's not applied to any other employee. Then the supported wage system is about productivity. So it's saying, are you as productive as other people? The problem is that, that in those situations in ADEs are applied to people who are given, who come into an ADE. The ADE says, this is the business that we do. This is the job that you had to, have to do. There is no matching of the skill and interest to see whether the people actually have the right skills and interests and can be developed accordingly to be more productive. And, and, and it's a system that's not applied to anyone else in our work settings. Like I would even say, you know, when I first left university, I was put on a graduate program and I had a whole lot of learning. I wasn't that productive for that organisation for quite a while. I had a lot to learn. But I still got paid my professional income all the time I was doing that learning. That doesn't happen for people in ADEs.
Later in this hearing, the Royal Commission will hear from two representatives from NDS. And in their statement, they say, most, if not all, supported employment services would be forced to cease their current operations if they were to pay full award wages. Are you, on behalf of Inclusion Australia, able to comment on that proposition and do you agree with the concern?
Well, yes, I am absolutely on behalf of Inclusion Australia able to comment on that proposition. First of all, that's very one-dimensional. Basically, it says, with the income that we have at the moment, we can't afford to pay anyone any better. They do not make the same statement about the other employees that are there. Secondly, an ADE is an employment support. Its purpose is to support people with disability into employment. Its purpose is not to provide all other people with jobs. And so it has to stick to its purpose. And we're not, there's no acknowledgement there of the conflict of interest between both being a provider of employment supports and an employer. The other thing in terms of it being one-dimensional is it assumes that the income that the AD receives is static. It assumes that the price that they're charging is, can't be changed. Now, many, many ADEs actually. Now, many, many ADEs actually get their business because they charge, they, their prices are lower than other businesses. And the reason that their prices are lower is because they don't pay the people with disability fair wages. The second thing is a lot of those contracts, the government contracts. Now, we already have a precedent. When the Shad's Award was acknowledged at, basically underpaying women, that the Shad's Award was too low, there was the equal remuneration order, where there was the five year, eight year period where the Shad's Award was advanced faster than the other awards. And all the government contracts that involved people, paid under the Shad's Award, were increased to accommodate that. So we already have a precedent that says, actually, if there are government contracts and other types of contracts, there are mechanisms to increase prices to enable people to be paid properly. So it doesn't look, it doesn't look at that either. And the third thing is there are multiple ways to fix the problem. So one of the things that we would say really strongly is that there's no reason for governments at the moment, in the short term, to pick up the difference. That the biggest issue, one of the biggest issues in terms of the exploitation of people with an intellectual disability or with disability in ADEs, is that they are not paid a fair wage. There is an opportunity for governments to subsidise that. By our calculations, the difference between someone who is receiving the disability support pension and receiving a low wage in a, receiving, for instance, the two dollars fifty four in an ADE and receiving the minimum wage is about nine thousand dollars a year. So we think that considerable consideration should be given to just topping that up. That governments should top that up. And then over a period of a transition period, there needs to be a transition where the wages paid by employers actually pick up appropriately and in a structured manner. And the amount that needs to be subsidised by government would decrease.
I want to move now to a second potential point of difference between open employment and segregated employment. And that is the question of transparency around workplace terms and conditions. Are you able to comment upon the difference between open employment and segregated employment in that context?
Well, historically, for example, people in segregated employment never got superannuation. So that is, that has recently been changed. But even now, as you'll know from Council Assisting's opening statement, it's fifteen dollars or the relevant superannuation, whichever is the higher. Fifteen dollars a week is not going to pay for someone's retirement. So there is an issue that people don't get, you know, aren't set up for retirement in the same way and aren't set up for independence in the same way that the rest of the community is when they go to work. We also heard that, for example, in the Sunnyfield case, that the people who worked in the ADE were not actually classed as employees, they were classed as clients. So they're not treated as employees, they're treated as clients. There's a whole attitudinal issue, which I think has come out a bit this morning, but one of the things that we hear a lot is people are just shouted a lot at work. That the people who are supposedly their employment supports actually are just shouting at them about productivity or telling them what to do next. That does not sound like employment support to me. And in terms of just wages and conditions. I've just lost my thought.
That's all right, Council Assisting will prompt you, I'm sure.
Yes, that'll be fine. That would be helpful. Thank you.
As part of the four yearly review of the SES award, the full bench of the Fair Work Commission did insert into the twenty ten version of the award and now into the twenty twenty version of the award, it's clause thirty two, which is a rights at work for supported employees provision. And firstly, are you familiar with that clause that's gone in?
Could you repeat it, please?
So this is the rights at work for supported employees. It was a clause that was inserted into the SES award as part of the four yearly review.
Yes.
And it's about ensuring, clause thirty two point one provides, when dealing with employment matters affecting supported employees, the employer shall take all reasonable steps to provide such employees with the information they require to exercise their workplace rights. You're familiar with the clause that I'm talking about?
Yes, thank you.
And that clause took effect on the first of March twenty twenty. Are you able to make any comment about whether the introduction of this clause has made any difference for the people that Inclusion Australia represents?
We've not heard anything to that effect. Again, the absence of independent information for people about even making the choice to go and work in an ADE is astonishing in that if you go to Centrelink and you are manifestly eligible for the DSP, which people with an intellectual disability are, you're not provided any information there. We don't see information being provided in easy read for people. We don't see an acknowledgement that easy read is to be, easy read materials are to be read with support. And so people need help supporting them. We just heard in the previous evidence that notices are put on the, on the wall and people are expected to just take that information in and report it or understand what it means. So the lack of information in accessible formats continues to be an ongoing problem.
Another of the areas of potential or of difference between open employment and segregated employment, and you've already touched on this, is the the potential increased risk of abuse and violence towards supported employees. You spoke about employees reported being shouted at. Are there any other, is there anything else you'd like to tell the Royal Commission on that topic of difference?
Well, certainly neglect and exploitation are big issues in, in ADEs. There's just this recurring theme about how people ask about their wage. We ask about how can we increase it? People are told, oh, we will reassess it at the end of the year. People go for an assessment thinking that the assessment might regard, might end up in higher wages and it just doesn't. But having said that, the other thing is segregated settings are very unsafe. One of the rationales for sheltered workshops when they were started in the nineteen fifties and through the decades has been that people are safer over there. But in fact, they're not. What they do is provide settings where support workers can exploit people, where people can be, you know, experience violence and abuse it. And that it's just hidden because the ability and processes for a person with an intellectual disability to complain are almost non-existent. Now, when I say non-existent, it doesn't mean that there might not be complaint mechanisms again up on the walls. But people are routinely not listened to. They're routinely not taken seriously. And then, and then when they are, no action is taken because as, as one person said, in, I think it's in our omnibus submission, they talk about how, how low the bar is, that basically everything's okay. In that environment, basically, what happens is whatever you do is good enough. Who cares? As long as you don't get beaten, raped or have your money stolen, that's all that matters. Again, a pretty low floor of involvement. I haven't seen much evidence that it's better anywhere else. So as long as the really, really diabolical things aren't happening, we can just ignore all of the low level of violence and abuse that happens apart from that.
From, from that evidence, it it's apparent that Inclusion Australia has some, some knowledge of some adverse practices. But do you also have any knowledge, have you been told about any positive experiences in ADEs?
This is where it gets, again, it's very complex. There are certainly plenty of stories where, as we've heard this morning, people feel valued. They feel valued about getting up in the morning, putting on a uniform or getting into their work clothes and doing all the other things that everyone else does when they go to work. One of the issues is if you have an intellectual disability and people, and, and people say say to you, this is what everyone else does, but it's not made clear that no one else goes and does it for two dollars fifty an hour. It's actually not the same. So certainly there are plenty of examples of people being treated nicely at work, where people are talked to kindly, where people value the camaraderie of the ADE, where people value getting out of the house and having relationships with other people. All those things are true, but they're also true of every other employment environment. The critical difference is, or the two critical differences are, first of all, other people have been paid an income and that income actually sets up their independent life. And secondly, other people are not felt, made to feel like they don't belong. So this thing where people with intellectual disability from very young ages are treated with such a lack of respect by the rest of the community that they need to be over there, that the difference makes people so uncomfortable that it's better, oh, you need the specialist supports over there. And we don't think about people as contributors. You know, people are framed as a burden and not contributors. They're framed as learners and not teachers. They're framed as cost and not benefits. There are all these assumptions made that have been in place for decades that haven't changed, you know, effectively since the nineteen fifty. That one of the reasons that we need people with intellectual disability to be in an ADC is respite for families. It's very unfair to categorise it that way. I have three children. I would like all of them to be out of the house working. I don't want any of them at home. It's got nothing to do with whether or not a person has got an intellectual disability or not. It's got to the point that actually people should live independent lives, including independent from their families. So there are certainly very many positive stories. And the positive stories are mainly about relationships. And one of the things about ADEs, in the same way as special schools, is the people that choose to work in an ADE or choose to work in a special school, often other people who want to work with people with an intellectual disability. They're full of good intent and that is all great and it can lead to some really heartwarming stories in terms of relationships. But it doesn't resolve the issue of employment. Employment is about where we give our time and we are paid for that and that money is then used to be able to buy the things in the rest of our lives. That's what.
Okay, I think, I think we.
I'm on my soapbox, sorry.
Just, just stay on the soapbox, but wait for the next question and then you can continue on the soapbox for a limited pick.
Yes, sir.
Acknowledging the differences that you have spoken about and the answer that you've just given about what employment itself means, does Inclusion Australia accept that at least in the short to medium term, there is a continuing role for ADEs for, as employment for people with permanent and significant disability? For people for whom open employment is not a viable option until the barriers to that employment are addressed?
We don't accept that we should do it until the barriers to employment are addressed. There was a vision, there was a vision document put out by the Australian Government, you know, for ADEs from twenty twelve to twenty twenty two. And that vision said that by twenty twenty two, things will be a lot different and they're not. We actually have to flip it on its head and make the changes, for instance, increasing wages and then bring everything along to it. As long as we say that the changes need to wait until everything else is fixed, we are not going to see any action. On the other hand, we do think that there's lots of skills and experience in ADEs. We know that ADEs do know about task analysis. We know that they do know how to be respectful towards people. We know that they do know how to support people. There's a whole lot of skills and expertise that could be good, put to good use. What we wouldn't agree with is that we just maintain the status quo until some perfect time in the future. We have to move on now and say there needs to be change. And we do accept absolutely that there is a role for organisations, that there needs to be a transition period and that there is no reason necessarily for ADEs to cease to exist. But they might look very different in the future in terms of the way that they support people, the money that's paid and their role in a local community.
Thinking about how ADEs might look different, are you familiar with the concept of reverse integration?
Well, in general, yes, I've heard it described.
And could you tell the Royal Commission what it means to you?
Reverse integration often means bringing the community to you rather than taking you to the community. Have some concerns about what that might mean in a geographical setting, that bringing the community in is actually not the same as people being in the community. But some of the other practices that go around it are certainly quite reasonable.
Is the, the concept of reverse integration is that perhaps a way that ADEs, as we currently see them, could be transformed more perhaps into social enterprises, as you've described them, where people with disability and people without disability work together as colleagues?
I'm concerned about the framing of bringing the people into the ADEs. The whole point about employment is that we all work in places that provide goods or services. So if you're, if it's an actual workplace, then it needs to be providing a good or service that's needed by the community. It shouldn't just be making up employment as a pretend thing. Having, being an ADE where you have a food van in your driveway, where the people with disability serve the rest of the staff, the food, is not real employment. You know, you need to be out in the community doing that. So I'm concerned that the premise of reverse, reverse integration would do that. There are also many ADEs that don't provide a good or service, but the skills they have are very useful. So they could be a community hub in terms of employment expertise to, to support people employed out in the community. I don't agree with the premise that we need the community brought to the people with disability. The premise is that the people with disability need to be out in the community. So assuming that that's just a terminology issue and the intent is to have people out in the community, that would be fine. But if it's not a terminology interview and it's basically saying just bring more people in, it's not really inclusion.
If the ADE is one of those that you've described that actually do produce a good or service, so it's a, it's a business in that sense and presently it's, employees are supported employees, people with disability, co-mingling that workforce or making it not just people with disability, is that, does that fit, sorry, withdraw that and start again. I'm talking about bringing people into a business that is actually making a good or service. So people with disability and people without disability work together to produce something that's of value to the community or to the company.
Oh, that would be, that would be perfectly acceptable, particularly of course, as long as people are paid the same wage for the same role. Absolutely.
And are you aware of any instances, for example, research or pilot programmes where this has been trialled?
I believe in overseas that has been trialled successfully, that it is, it is absolutely possible to bring people together. We have no problem with people with disability working with other people with disability. The, the answer to congregation and segregation is not for everyone to be just one person with disability with no other people around them. It's absolutely fine for there to be different combinations of people with and without disability working together. And certainly we've seen overseas that that's been successful.
But you're not aware of any Australian examples?
I think there's been a couple of pilot projects. The problem with pilot projects is they haven't demonstrated their long-term sustainability yet. But certainly it's the sort of work that we would support.
I want to change tack a little now and ask you some questions about ADEs and First Nations people. And firstly, are you aware of any data that shows the representation of First Nations people amongst supported employees?
I'm not specifically aware. I have the, oh, it'll take me too long to look up. I do have the NDIS information about people with an intellectual disability here, but I can't recite that data off the top of my head.
That's quite all right. It wasn't supposed to be a, who can find it in the document first? I just wondering if it was something you knew, we can ask the NDIS people about that. Is, is the area of First Nations people with intellectual. Is, is the area of First Nations people with intellectual disability something that Inclusion Australia has done, any specific work with, with that cohort of people?
Uh, we have, uh, just recently expanded into the Northern Territory. We have a project in the Northern Territory that we are, uh, doing in partnership with First Peoples Disability Network and NIDA, the National Ethnic Disability Alliance, and SIDA, the Children and Young People Australia. And certainly we have learned a lot in a, in a relatively short time. There are real barriers to First Nations people with disability, particularly because intellectual disability is not always, you know, diagnosed or even seen so much, you know, identified as a, as a separate issue. And so the systems that support people with an intellectual disability, such as Centrelink, where you have to have an IQ test, such as how you, um, get put into an ADE, such as what sort of a supports are made available to you, become even more complex if you don't have a diagnosis or if your diagnosis is right on the fringe. So there's a whole lot of extra complexity, uh, around how people who might not identify as having an intellectual disability, but who have similar support needs as people with an intellectual disability are properly supported, how they're supported in community and what, um, employment options are available. So certainly I would not claim to be an expert in this area, that First Peoples Disability Network would, uh, the peak that lead that work. But certainly we have a growing understanding of the complexity. Still trying to get our heads around what some of the solutions might be.
Um, Ms Dowsett, may I ask a question?
Certainly, Commissioner.
Thank you. I just wanted to know when that project started.
Um, it's an actually, it's just an NDIS Quality and Safeguards Commission project and it's a, it's about rights training for people with intellectual disability in services. So technically it started on the first of July last year. But of course, um, we only had got boots on the ground in the territory a couple of months later. And we're doing a lot of work on the resources at the moment to make sure they're culturally appropriate before we actually start the rollout. But certainly FPDN have told us that going and running workshops in the traditional sense might not be the best way to go about it and to really, um, think about how we get the message about rights and standing up for yourself and, and being able to have choice and control, uh, in your service to get those themes out to, to all people with intellectual disability, particularly in remote and very remote communities.
Thank you.
Ms McAlpon, you used a phrase in your answer to me a little while ago that I'd just like to tease out a little bit. You spoke about being put into an ADE if I, if my note is correct. What, what do you mean by being put into? How does it happen that you become employed in an ADE?
ADEs are, uh, distribute around Australia basically on a geographical basis. So what happens is that when you get referred to an ADE, for instance, by Centrelink or by any other method, is that the first thing you're done is you're given the people in the local, in the local area. Secondly, it's driven, as are group homes, by vacancies. So if a ADE has vacancy and is looking for someone, they find people with intellectual disability and put them in. So it's not a person-centred approach. Doesn't say to the person with disability, what are your skills and interests? What sort of training have you done? What would you like to do for work? What it says is, here's a job that fits a person with intellectual disability. You're a person with intellectual disability and you're referred across straight away.
You referred to the, the NDIS data and you, you had no doubt the printed report in your hand when you were talking about it. And in some of your evidence in public hearing nine and some of Inclusion Australia's material, you've commented on the way NDIS asks questions to capture information about people participating in paid employment. Can you tell the Royal Commission what your concern with the question is?
So in the long-term survey, the NDIS asked people, are you in paid employment? And basically if you were earning one hour a week earning $1 an hour, the answer would be yes. So we end up having a situation where the NDIS quite admirably is saying that it's looking for high employment rates of people with disability. But those statistics have been propped up by the 20,000 odd people who are in an ADE and that's been called paid employment. So there's no, uh, except in their deep dive where there is a bit more data. But in the standard data that's provided by the NDIA, there is no delineation made whether a person is in open employment or sheltered employment, whether people are earning a, a wage that actually gives them independence or just $2.54 an hour.
I'd like to ask now some more specific questions about the NDIS and participant plans which are provided for in section 33 of the National Disability Insurance Scheme Act. Before I leap into the detail of the questions, are you familiar with participant plans? Is that something you can answer questions about?
Absolutely.
So participant plans, it's correct to say have two parts. There's the participant of state, participants' statement of goals and aspirations, which is prepared by the participant.
Yes, that's correct.
And then there's the statement of participant's support, which is prepared with the participant and approved by the CEO or delegate.
That's correct.
So if we can start with the first part, the goals and aspirations or what might be called goal setting, are you able to comment on the information or support that's available to NDIS participants to assist them in preparing their statement of goals and aspirations?
Well, the NDIS puts out a whole lot of documents and some of those things are an easy read about preparing for your planning meeting. But it doesn't really explain what things mean, like what the difference between an ADE might be compared to open employment. Doesn't really talk about what type of evidence that you might, oh, yeah, what, what you might want to do. So it, and it doesn't make an assumption that all people of working age should be offered employment support. So it doesn't necessarily routinely always say to people in planning meetings, do you want a job? What would you like to do?
To your knowledge, is there someone whose responsibility it is or could be to identify a supported employee working in an ADE setting who might have the capacity or might be able to develop the capacity to work in a different setting?
Well, the closest thing would be a local area coordinator or a support coordinator that people theoretically, you know, when they have their plans renewed, would come into contact with both or either of those people. And that, um, that questions could be asked. LACs don't necessarily have a lot of expertise, particularly in intellectual disability or in how to frame the questions or how to support people. But certainly they are a person that interacts with the person in a position to ask some of the critical questions.
I'm interested to explore how you might, as, as an NDIS participant, how you get into your statement of goals and aspirations. I'd like to try open employment or I'd like to try self-employment. How, are you able to comment on how that might happen?
It's not that hard to get it into your plan. I mean, sorry, to get it into your statement of goals. It's not that hard to say, I would like to work or I would like to be self-employed. What's really hard is trying to get supports in your plan. It's, it's quite easy to get, so you're probably going to ask me some questions about that in a minute. Minute, maybe I should stop. It's not that hard, it's not, it's not that hard to say it in your objectives. What is hard is to have that fulfilled.
Well, before we move on to their statement of participant's support, just one last question on the goal setting. Are you aware of any examples of good practice in relation to the identification of the supported employee in an ADE who might have capacity to work in a different setting?
No.
So moving on to statement of participant's support, and this is, if I might be blunt, where the money is, is that correct?
That's absolutely correct.
Right. And so you were explaining that it's hard to get supports into a plan.
It's very hard to get supports into a plan. And so one of the things that's really hard is if you don't have, is the agency's approach to non-registered providers versus registered providers. So the easiest.
Pause there?
Yes.
Non-registered providers, these are people who are not registered with the NDIS.
That's correct. So a lot of small innovative providers or people that have some expertise in providing really personalised service for a person to transition into open employment are not registered, uh, haven't gone through the registration process. Typically, the very big providers who provide AD, well, an ADE provider must be registered. And, and if you provide a support called Support School, that's about to change, but School Leavers Employment Supports, you have to be a registered provider. So, um, the things that end up sort of becoming programmes, which are not necessarily intended to be, but do, are usually provided by big registered providers. Um, and the NDIS has ended up with a bias towards registered providers that if you have a quote from a big, well-known registered provider, you are more likely to get supports in your plan. But the supports you're likely to get are more likely to be group supports such as an ADE or, uh, or a SLES programme that's not tailored to you. It's actually very, very hard to get individual employment supports in your plan. It's very hard to get employment supports for self-employment. And it's very hard to get, uh, more than a few hours a week of individual support, uh, employment supports in your plan, other than, as I said, an ADE.
In her statement, Ms Mitra, who will give evidence on behalf of the NDIA later in the hearing, says that the, the new pricing framework is, and this is a quote, actively encourages participants to consider and take up new employment opportunities, end quote. Are you able to comment on that proposition?
Um, I am, to answer that question, I'm just going to take off my hat slightly as the CEO of Inclusion Australia and put on my mother of a young man with an intellectual disability hat and say my personal experience as is in our recent plan, that my son said very clearly he wanted to work, he wanted to work in the open employment. And when the plan came back, there was not a single dollar for employment supports. He got four hours a week of individual skill building and he did not get the 12 hours a week he asked to work in his micro enterprise and also to try, um, also to, to try open employment. So I know at a very deep and personal level that explicitly asking, having an employment goal in your plan and explicitly asking for employment supports will not give you a single dollar of employment support. Put my CEO hat back on and to say that we hear this more generally. What we see is that people who have quotes from big providers can get supports, but then those providers, um, the conflict of interest, to talk again about the polished pathways, the conflict of interest against helping someone into open employment versus channeling someone into an ADE where they have an established business or into a day programme is so high that we, we, we just don't see people moving into open employment.
Part of the underlying policy with the change to the NDIS and the new pricing framework has been about breaking down the, the nexus between being an employer and being a provider of employment supports. Now, although the, the transition what is now finished, it's only a relatively new, we're all in the, the new model now. But are you able to comment upon whether that, that breaking of the nexus has made any difference, practically speaking, on the ground with the kinds of issues you're just talking about? That getting, getting a plan, getting what you want, moving forward?
Um, we haven't seen a groundswell. We certainly, uh, support the agency in making those changes. Like, we certainly would agree that they are looking to try and break that nexus and help providers understand the difference between being a employer and a provider of supports. What we're seeing is what is similar, what we are seeing is more similar to what you saw in the DES hearing, where there was the issue of the related entity, where you have one, an organisation that does one thing, sort of referring to related entities. It's not quite the same, but we, we're seeing an increase in, um, providers providing sort of employment scenarios in their own businesses and calling that employment. Where it's still arguably, in a very short term, it could be described as building skills. You know, putting someone in a food caravan at the back of your, um, at, 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 at the back of your provider location and having someone work there for six months or so could be described as building capacity and learning how to use a cash register and all the rest of it. The thing that we're not seeing is people moving from that into another environment in open employment. We're not seeing that bridge, um, that, that, that gap bridged yet. But I would agree that the pricing mechanisms are more helpful than they were.
Is that, that next step, that bridge you're talking about, is that potentially the next part of the participants' plan? That they, their supports, that you've, you've done your training in your food van and now you need another plan that moves you into the next scenario?
Well, the problem for people with an intellectual disability is we keep, your plans keep happening in group scenarios. So the pricing structure and the availability of the support is all predicated on you being in groups. So we continually see providers send people down to Woolies in groups of three or four to do their work experience, to do all these other things. It's impossible for me to tell whether it's the providers not doing what they should be doing or whether the price limits aren't okay. Like, it's very hard for us to tell. What we do know from the perspective of a person with an intellectual disability is you can't get an individual support. You can't get a support that looks at you and says, you have done this and now you need to go into this individual thing. Arguably, that's what the DES programme is supposed to provide, but it just doesn't happen. In between the DES programme or the NDIS, we are not seeing people move from learning, we're not seeing place and train put in place, that a person is put into a job and then they learn about work in a real working environment.
Is that not part of choice and control? If you've got X number of dollars in your plan, can you, as the NDIS participant, choose to spend those dollars in a group scenario or in an individual supported scenario?
Not for the stated supports such as an ADE or a, um, School Leavers Employment Supports. It is my understanding that that might change on the first of July this year, that the, the NDIS is working on, on that at the moment. That's something that unsurprisingly, we have mentioned many times. And so I do believe that change is in the wind. But no, for the supports that are called stated supports, you can't basically get a collective amount of money and then spend it like on a per hour rate. You can do it in your core supports, you know, they'll, they'll, in your core supports, they'll determine the budget basically made on the group rates, but you can spend it at an, like clearly fewer hours, but you can spend it, uh, to purchase individual supports. It's, that's not really, um, available in support such as getting support from an ADE or the School Lever Employment Support, um, as it currently stands.
I want to move on now to recommendations and considerations for the future. And so I, I would like to invite you to, to tell the Royal Commission what it is that you would like to see the Royal Commission thinking about when it's framing its recommendations about this aspect, about ADEs.
Um, I'd like the Royal Commission to first of all, think about wages to say that in fact, it's not okay to pay any Australian citizen less than a minimum wage, that, um, that there will need to be considerations around some people with very high support needs and that maybe things like a government subsidy, you know, wage subsidy might be needed. Certainly in the short term, we believe very strongly that the, that, you know, this $9,000 a year gap needs to be, uh, needs to be filled by government. So we're talking up to about 180 million a year for 20,000, if there's 20,000 people with, with disability in ADEs. But of course, not all of them work full-time and not all of them earn $2.54 an hour. So it would be less than that. So addressing the wage disparity quickly would be a very big consideration. Second, sorry.
I understand that you would also like to see specific reference to people with intellectual disability in government plans, policies and strategies?
Yes, and then there's a whole lot of interface with other systems that need to change. So at the moment, um, the Australian Public Service has, um, has an aim of getting 7% people with disability into the workforce. It doesn't talk about people with an intellectual disability, which means that there's actually a risk that if people with sensory and physical disability, if the employment strategies of the Australian Public Service and other organisations are pitched at people with sensory and physical disabilities, that people with an intellectual disability will miss out completely. So having specific quotas for people with an intellectual disability is really important. We also need to see the interface, for instance, with wage tapering, that at the moment, the way that the wage, if you're on the disability support pension and you earn more than the threshold, that you lose 50 cents in the dollar, that consideration about how to change the wage tapering system such that that earning more than the threshold is not a disincentive for work, but becomes an incentive to work. And do you want me to keep going about the details in terms of the other systems?
No, I think I might ask you to stop there. I'm just very conscious of the time and I do want to give the Chair and the other commissioners an opportunity to ask any questions they may have. So without going into the detail of the systems, were there other key recommendations you wish to flag?
Yes, well, certainly fixing disability employment services so that people can get proper support to, people with intellectual disability can get the support they need that's evidence-based and individual is imperative. Employment quotas, as we've mentioned, transition from segregated employment. So understanding that segregation in and of itself does not solve any problems, saying that people with intellectual disability belong over there does not acknowledge, is not respectful and does not acknowledge their contribution. What we are seeing is even though we are seeing a change in attitudes towards people with disability more generally and we're talking, you know, we've seen a change in advertising, we're seeing, we are seeing some community change with the NDIS. There's still this acceptance that, oh yes, that's all true, except for people with an intellectual disability. And so actually changing that mindset and saying, no, they're entitled to be part of the community as well, is really critical. And then removing the barriers. So at the moment, as I've said, all of the systems, the way that things are priced, the way they're set up, the interfaces with Centrelink and Centrelink reporting, all are smoothed out if you're in segregated employment and they're all multiple barriers if you're in open employment. So really looking at smoothing out the systemic barriers is critical to opening up that ployway, you know, so that the polished pathway becomes towards open employment and not towards segregation.
Thank you very much, Ms McAlpine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr House. Pardon me, I'll ask First Commissioner Mason, do you have any questions of Ms McAlpine?
Ms McAlpine, thank you very much for your evidence this afternoon. I had a question, and this particular document has been in front of mine as I've been a commissioner here on this commission, which is to do with the Closing the Gap National Agreement. And this might be something you might take on notice because of the evidence you've given today around people with disabilities, with intellectual disabilities and and I'd be really interested in those who are First Nations around more inclusion. That national agreement has a really strong emphasis on cultural wellbeing and language, cultural practices, cultural communications as a core foundation of that document. And if that is absent for First Nations people with disabilities in the settings that we've been talking about today, where they aren't provided a culturally safe environment where they're working now, it seems that there's already a gap in what's happening in the mainstream for First Nations people through that Closing the Gap National Agreement. And for those who are in different settings, I'm really interested to know how that gap can be closed in a sense that it's intra-First Nation people communities, as in First Nations people with disability, intellectual disability, about closing the gap framework, which is, there is disability mentioned in it, but it's very much a national framework, how that gap can be closed, be more inclusive in where people are today, but also into the future. Does that make sense?
I think so. I think that there's a lot to be learned from the Closing the Gap process as much as anything else, that the way that the First Peoples' community has been resourced and brought together to really address the really thorny problems has been really important. The more we work with FPDN, the more we understand the relation, the alignment between the disadvantage of First Nations people and people with an intellectual disability in terms of life outcomes, in terms of preventable deaths, in terms of over-representation in jails, all those things. They're true for people with an intellectual disability and for First Peoples', and if you have both in terms of the compounding disadvantage, then there is a lot to be done. I can't say that I've got any particular expertise in what some of those solutions would be, but the longer that we work together, we understand that the approach to the Closing the Gap has, the more, the recent approach has been very positive for FPDN, talk about that very positively and say that there should be a similar approach around intellectual disability and people with disability and that bringing those two processes together would be a very good idea.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Galbally.
Thank you, Ms McAlpine, for your evidence. I'd like to ask you about the whole issue of aspiration and really low expectations that becomes almost a bigotry in various settings. And I wondered about your views about that in employment, about just no aspiration or low aspiration. And yeah, the really low expectations.
Yes, it's really difficult for people with an intellectual disability and for families, you know, as early as early childhood, early intervention. You start being told to be realistic and no one tells you when you're a family member and you're only a parent of a two-year-old or a three-year-old. You hear about low expectations, but you don't realise that low expectations actually are reflected back to you as be realistic. And these expectations of what people can do or can't do are so old. You know, when people with intellectual disability were institutions with low healthcare, no education, no simulation, no opportunities, you looked at someone who lived almost on a bed or could barely speak and you thought, well, that person is not a very, can't offer the community a lot. That was in the 1950s, you know, we're now in 2022. So what's happened is that culture of expectation hasn't changed. This expectation that people with disability, including people with intellectual disability, can do far more and that you don't have to just be realistic that they, oh, won't be able to read or won't be able to work or anything like that. I know that siblings of people with intellectual disability can tell you if they can conquer very complex audiovisual systems, if they can use the same devices that everyone else can and figure that out for themselves, they can do a lot. They can think about things in interesting ways. There are just so many things that people can do. So it is really problematic that we have such low expectations of people with an intellectual disability and that very long-term, very old stereotypes are still used as excuses to keep people in the same settings. Even when you look at the Fair Work Commission comments, it shows a real lack of understanding of what people with an intellectual disability are capable of and can do. It's very, it's a very old thing to think that people really have nothing to offer.
And so you're saying in application to work that it really condemns people to staying the same, you know, to getting put into ADEs and other places and the Fair Work Commission's collaborated in that? Is that what you're saying?
I think it's unintentional, but it's when, when the experts in the room are the providers and the experts aren't people with disability and their families, then you get a completely different view on what's possible. And when you're talking about people, for instance, historically, who might be in their 50s or 60s, who were put into institutions when they were children and who haven't had all the other advantages, that if you look at what was the supports that were put about them, it's completely different to someone who was born in the year 2000 or 2010 in terms of the advantages they have and the abilities that they'll be able to bring to the workforce. Like, the judgements are not straightforward and they're unconscious bites. It's not deliberate, but absolutely it ends up being basically systemic collusion and systemic neglect.
Thank you.
Did Inclusion Australia give evidence before the Fair Work Commission on the case?
Oh, we did, Chair. It's very sad. My predecessor, the late Paul Kane, was an absolute expert in employment and he unfortunately passed away in 2018. And he was the one that was the expert witness at those hearings and he was one of the key witnesses for for the, supporting the people with intellectual disability in the case, yes.
And his evidence would have been to the same effect as your evidence today, I take it?
Absolutely.
Why do you say the Fair Work Commission has collaborated in rejecting the evidence that the expert gave from your organisation and other evidence? Were they not doing what they're meant to do, that is assessing the evidence and making determinations based on that evidence?
Well, there's some underlying assumptions there that I don't think were explored. There's some underlying assumptions about what the productivity of people is and how that can change. There's some underlying expectations that people with intellectual disability should be in the congregated and collective setting. So it's sort of, the judgement that the Fair Work Commission's making is taking all of those things already as sort of fact and not actually looking deeper and saying, could it be different? How would it work? And certainly without making sure that all the systems work together, you would be in a situation if you just said unilaterally as the Fair Work Commission, okay, everyone at an ADE has to be paid $20.33 an hour, we would see all the ADEs close. That's not to anyone's benefit. It is not to the benefit of people.
I understand that. I'm just trying to work out why it is that you say that the Fair Work Commission got it so comprehensively wrong after taking, as I understand it, evidence from many sources over quite a long period.
Because, because it's one system, because it's just talking about the wage system and for things to improve, the disability support pension, sorry, the disability support system has to change, the disability support pension interface would need to change, the way that people are supported into employment need to change. They're just setting wages and making that one change unilaterally without the other systems changing with it would, could cause harm. Like, that is absolutely true. So collusion maybe is a very strong word to use. And so I'm happy to wind that back a bit, but it is saying that because each system only takes itself into consideration when it makes its decisions, the way those systems work together are to keep people in poverty and in segregated environments, that it's absolutely critical that the systems are all changed simultaneously or that there's some government mechanism to make sure that the way that the interfaces happen with each other support people differently, then we're never going to see any difference because each of those systems has to only look at its own role and the impact of behaving unilaterally.
Understand your criticisms of the existing system. What I'm not entirely clear about is what you're going to put in its place. How are you going to bridge the gap? Isn't that the hard part? And what do you say can be done to bridge the gap? And as I understand it, bridging the gap is moving people or allowing people who are in supported employment in ADEs or perhaps similar organisations to get into open employment. That's the trick, isn't it?
It is. And there are two answers to that and one's very long-term and one's shorter term. The long-term answer is-
Start with the short, start with the short term.
Well, the short term, well, I think the short-term answer is instead of throwing money at ADEs and and the organisations to change, we actually say we're going to put the money into wages, that we're going to increase the wages of people, that governments can do that because that will drive its own change. Because once people expect to get the higher wages and have the higher wages, we will see some of the other changes that will come.
Can I just pause there? Because I'm afraid I don't understand that. From an economic point of view, I just don't follow how that is going to work. If you say that, let me take another starting point. Your proposition was equal pay for equal work. I don't think anybody is going to dispute that. But implicit in equal pay for equal work is unequal pay if the work is not equal. So that implies, does it not, that you accept that there would have to be an assessment made of, and I don't, there may be different ways of describing it, some would say the productive capacity of an individual worker or what an individual worker is worth compared to a worker who does not have a relevant disability and is doing the job. So presumably you accept that some kind of assessment has to be made. Is that right?
Yes, and that happens in the rest of our work, you know, some of us get paid more than others depending on skills, experience and all the rest of it. But we would say there's a threshold, that in fact, there's a threshold that, you know, like a minimum wage threshold that can't hardly cross.
That's long been established in Australia with the harvested judgment and the basic wage. There's nothing novel about that. What I don't understand is how increasing the wages to a specified minimum is going to ease the pathway into open employment. That's the part I don't follow.
It resolves one of the critical issues at the moment, but at the same time, the pathway to inclusive employment needs to be, this is the fear of employers, that employers say if we employ a person with a disability, particularly an intellectual disability, then we won't get the productivity that we need. And so what we don't see are systems that work together to resolve that. One of the ways to resolve it is for the government to actually take up the gap in the productivity, you know, in the wage, so that the person experiences a full wage, but that the employer doesn't have the full burden of it, particularly at the time when someone might be being trained, when the job capacity work is being done. So we would see that the wage subsidy resolves some of the issues from the perspective of the person with disability and at the same time, buy some time for the other transitions that need to happen from the employer's perspective.
I think you referred to a $9,000 gap in order to ensure that people with disability now working in ADEs at reduced wages would be able to get a minimum, the equivalent of the minimum wage. Can you explain that $9,000 gap, how that's calculated and whether there is a document that explains the figure of $180 million to which you referred in your evidence?
We'd be able to, we would have to take that question on notice, but basically it's a spreadsheet that we, you know, it's a spreadsheet that says if you get this much income, it has to, it's a complex spreadsheet because you've got to take all the wage taper, you know, the tapering arrangements with the disability support pension. But it's our calculations on the difference between what people can earn in that environment and what the minimum wage is of 20, you know, about $40,000 a year. So that $20.33.
The minimum wage, the minimum wage is now about $36,000 a year. If someone is getting $4 an hour, or some people working in ADEs are, that's that on my calculations is $7,000 a year and that suggests a $29,000 gap. I'm just not sure how you get to $9,000 out of that.
Because we also included the disability support pension as part of the income.
And the disability support pension at the maximum rate is what?
Oh, it's, well, it's different for different people.
Well, don't, if you don't have it at hand, that's fine. We can work that out. All right. Well, I would invite you at some stage that if this is something that you think is workable, it would be helpful to have the calculations, the analysis that explains how it is we're going to get to the destination you want to reach.
Absolutely. But I would also say everyone needs to be in the room, like we completely agree that everyone needs to be in the room. ADE providers, people with intellectual disability, families, employers, that this is a very complex problem to solve. And so one of the reasons for a transition plan is to allow the time for some of the really complex issues to be sorted out. What I do know is that some of those things have been sorted out for First Peoples', that there are particular wage subsidies in place for people in remote communities who are training, who haven't had access to the same work experience and experience opportunities along the way. So I know that people with economic credentials who are able to add to that environment, we are advocacy organisation suggesting that this might be a starting point. But what's really clear is that just waiting for some perfect time in the future before the change is made has not, has not worked for the last 30 years and is unlikely to work for the next.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you. I assume that there are no counsel that wish to ask Ms McAlpine any questions? And if that is the case, Ms McAlpine, thank you very much. And if that is the case, Ms McCullpin, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission and giving your, giving your evidence, if I may say so, so passionately. It is of great assistance to the Royal, the Royal Commission. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to be part of these conversations. They're important ones for the community to be having.
Thank you. Yes, Ms Alson, what do we do now?
Thank you, Chair. We are going to just have a quick tag team. I'm going to swap spots with Ms McCann and she's going to introduce the next witness.
Very good. We don't need to adjourn. That will happen instantaneously.
Instantaneously.
Excellent. Seamlessly.
Thank you, Chair. Our final witness today is Kate. Kate, like Gersh, who you heard from earlier, is a parent of a, a parent whose daughter Emily is working in an ADE where she has worked for the past seventeen years. Kate and Emily are pseudonyms and are subject to non-publication orders, and the ADE is also not identified. Commissioners, the statement of Kate can be found at volume A, tab seventeen. And the transcript of this pre-recorded evidence is at tab nineteen of that volume. The pre-record goes for about twenty-five, if I could please.
Yes, please do. Thank you.
So the Royal Commission is joined by Kate from her home, and Kate's daughter Emily works at an ADE in a regional area. Welcome to you, Kate.
Thank you.
Kate, you've made a statement for the Royal Commission dated the thirtieth of March twenty twenty-two. You have a copy of that statement with you today?
I do.
And I understand there's two minor amendments that you wish to make to that statement.
Yes.
Is that right? The first one is at paragraph thirteen of your statement on page three. And on the final sentence, I understand that it should read one year rather than two. Would you like to make that amendment?
Yes, please.
And the second amendment is at paragraph twenty-three, referring to Emily's work hours. The fifth sentence should read three thirty as her finishing time as opposed to three twenty. Is that right?
Yes.
Now that those minor amendments have been made, is your statement true and correct?
Yes.
Want to confirm with you that in relation to the matters that we're going to speak about today, that you agree to tell the truth?
I do.
And what we're doing today is pre-recording your evidence to play at the Royal Commission at public hearing twenty-two. You understand that, don't you?
I do.
So how long has Emily been working at the ADE?
Seventeen years.
Right. And I'd like to start by talking about Emily's schooling. You've told us in your statement that Emily went to a mainstream school and attended special education classes. Was Emily's disability supported in her special ed classes?
Yes.
In what way would you say her disability was supported?
They adjusted the learning. They slowed the pace of learning down to suit the individual. And they identified areas of weakness and, and worked with that.
And when Emily was preparing to move from high school to work, you said that you remembered that there was either a careers advisor or a social worker helping her. Do you remember how that advisor or worker helped Emily?
By organising some work experience.
And you've told us that she did some work experience in your statement at a pet shop. And that was because she loved animals, is that right?
Yes.
And do you recall if she did work experience at any other place?
Yes.
And where was that, Kate?
It was at a nursing home.
Now, can you remember if anyone from the school ever talked to you about Emily's transition from school to work?
No, they didn't.
Did Emily ever express to you any dreams or goals that she had for her career?
Yes, she did.
And what were they?
She wanted to work in childcare.
And did she have any opportunities to explore that goal while she was at work or, or soon after she finished, sorry, while she was at school, or soon after she finished school?
No, she didn't.
I understand though, from your statement, that she has recently had some experience in a childcare centre. Is that right?
Yes.
How did that experience come about?
Through the NDIS funding, Emily was allocated somebody to assist her with different things. And this lady found out what Emily wanted to do. And in her own time, she sought to identify, contact people that could help or offer her some work experience. She also organised for Emily to sit her first aid certificate that would enable her to have the work experience in a childcare centre.
Did you feel as though Emily had that level of support in her later years of school?
No, she didn't.
Do you think she would have benefited from that sort of support?
Absolutely.
So Kate, after Emily finished school, you've told us in your statement that she started working in a supermarket chain. How did that job come about?
The school organised that.
And how long did she work there for?
About three months.
And I understand she resigned from that position, but soon after you also moved to a regional area, is that right?
Yes.
And how long after you moved to the regional area did Emily start working at the ADE?
About twelve months.
And how did that job come about?
Through myself contacting the ADE directly.
How did you find out about the ADE?
Other parents with special needs family members let me know there were these places around.
And Emily got the job?
She did.
And how did she feel about that when she started working there?
Over the moon, very excited, very enthusiastic. We all were.
And why, why was she feeling that way? What did she like about it?
She got to go to work every day like everybody else. And at work, she had a whole new set of friends.
And we, did you think it was a good fit for her where she was working?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And why, Kate?
Because they were holistic. They looked after any of their emotional needs. They were there to counsel them or guide them if they needed. They guided them and stepped them through any of the tasks they were going to be performing and they supported them through that. And they listened to them if they, and they respected them. And they communicated really well to the families.
And I understand that you also had a chance to volunteer at the factory a few times to help out. And you would have had a chance to observe the workplace, is that right, when you did that?
Yes.
In your statement, you expressed some concerns about the conditions of the workplace that you observed. What were those concerns?
Mainly the heat and the cold.
And in relation to the heat, can you just describe that a bit more?
In the summer, it's very, very hot in there. And they still work through it, through the heat. And the same thing for during the winter, it gets very cold in there and they still work in there.
So were you there during the hot months?
I was.
And was there an air conditioner, for example, where you were working?
No.
All right. So you would have seen Emily working when you were volunteering. How would you describe, what sort of worker Emily is?
She's very hardworking. She takes a job very seriously. She puts everything into it. She's really enthusiastic and proud of what she does.
You must be very proud.
I am.
You've gone to the trouble, Kate, at paragraph thirty-six of your statement, of setting out a table of pay rates that Emily has had over the years. I might just walk through that, and if you can let me know if it's correct. You've indicated that in October two thousand and five, Emily received a dollar thirty-two per hour. In December two thousand and eighteen, that increased some years later to five dollars and seventy-five cents. One July two thousand and nineteen, six dollars thirty-four. Nine November two thousand and twenty, six dollars sixty-three. And the last record that you've indicated was the thirtieth of September twenty twenty-one at eight dollars thirty-seven. Are those figures correct?
Yes.
Now, you've indicated that her pay would increase by yearly review. How were those reviews conducted?
In the past, there were her immediate supervisor, another supervisor or staff member, Emily herself. We were invited to attend. And we would go through a list of skills or tasks and her immediate supervisor would indicate whether, how competent at those tasks she was.
And when was the last time you attended one of those meetings?
Three or four years ago. It was pre-COVID, way before COVID.
And was it important for you to attend those meetings?
Absolutely.
And why haven't you attended those meetings?
I've not been invited, nor was I aware they were taking place.
Okay. And why is it important that you attend? Or do, do you think it was important that you did attend, I should ask?
Yes.
And why is that, Kate?
So we understood what Emily was doing, how she was going at work. And to, to, just to check that she was being treated correctly.
Okay. Now, has there ever been opportunities for Emily since starting at the ADE to work in open employment?
No, not that I'm aware of, no.
Are you aware of any conversations or steps that might have been taken by the ADE to assist with any transition to open employment for Emily?
No.
Now, just if I could talk about what Emily did day to day at the ADE. You've indicated in your statement that originally she was doing some packing and picking type of jobs. Has Emily's work or tasks changed over the seventeen years that she's worked at this ADE?
Not really, no.
Can you identify any, any ways in which her days could be different in terms of the task that she does?
The difference would be the products that she works with.
Can you explain that a little bit further for us?
So it's still packing and picking, but it'll be packing and picking a different product for a different company. So the way you pack the product would be different.
I see. And have you spoken to Emily about how she feels about the fact that the task that she do hasn't changed all that much over the years?
Yes.
And what does she say about that?
It gets boring.
Okay. Now, you've also stated that you've not seen Emily's job description, but you have expressed some concerns about, at times, Emily doing some personal care tasks. Could you please tell the commissioners what tasks Emily has told you that she has done in that regard?
She's had to assist other work, a, a particular worker who is reliant on a mobility walker. She's had to help her toilet. She's had to help her get tea and coffee, warm up her food at meal times or prepare some, something for her. And yeah, just generally assist her with getting to and from her workstation and the toilets or the kitchen.
Awesome. And has Emily ever had any training for those sorts of personal care tasks?
No, she hasn't.
Has she talked to you about why she's been doing that sort of thing?
Yes.
And what has she said?
That she does it because nobody else will help her.
Now, Kate, I understand from your statement that you have become aware of some behaviour of a senior management manager at the ADE where Emily works that is unacceptable. How is it that you've become aware of this behaviour?
Emily told me.
And can you please tell the commissioners what Emily has told you about the senior manager's behaviour?
She told me that he came out to see why a certain person was laughing. And that the, the person tried to explain to him that he was still working while he was laughing with his coworker.
Kate, can I just interrupt you for one moment? When you're talking about a person, are you talking about a supported employee, a person with disability?
Yes, yes.
Sorry to interrupt you, if you could please continue.
Yes, so the supported employee tried to explain to the manager that he was still working while he was laughing. The supported employer, employee has a really bad stutter. And he was trying to, he, he was stuttering as he was explaining his, what he was doing. And the manager, over the top of the stuttering person, over the top of him, he pointed with his finger and mimicked him, he imitated him and, and he was going da, 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 at him in front of everybody.
And did Emily tell you how this made her feel?
Oh, yes. She felt uncomfortable. She felt a bit humiliated on behalf of the person, and she thought it was absolutely rude. She was really upset.
And Kate, has Emily told you anything else that's been concerning to you?
She said he's done it to two other people who also stutter. And he picks on the lower functioning people. And he also does not show any female's respect.
When you say he hasn't, doesn't show female's respects, has Emily ever experienced anything personally?
Yes, she has.
And can you tell us about that?
Working in one section, she was in a, what they call the clean room. And there were two people in there, Emily and a coworker who is male. This particular staff member came in, greeted the male only, ignored her, then proceeded to have a conversation with the male, only the male. He only addressed the male. He only addressed the male and then completely ignored her and walked out the room.
And has Emily told you how she feels about this sort of behaviour?
Yes, she feels really uncomfortable. She feels he's rude.
Kate, I want to ask you now about your hopes for Emily's future. Can you tell us what those hopes are?
I hope she, she has a safe, comfortable and caring future, whether that's in a workplace, at home, that sort of thing.
And what about in relation to her work life specifically?
That she has a safe, comfortable work environment, something that she enjoys, that she looks forward to doing and feels comfortable in.
Thank you. Now, just moving into the last part of this session, Kate, I just want to ask you about some of the really helpful recommendations that you've made in your statement. The first recommendations relate to young people transitioning from school to work. And you've stated that young people with disability would benefit from a support worker specialising in employment in their later years of schooling. What benefits can you see from young people having this sort of support in the later years of their schooling?
It would motivate them to get employment. It would identify what that person is interested in and therefore more likely to succeed in. Yeah, they would be able to get some work experience, decide whether that's going to work for them, that they like it or not. Yeah.
And do you think that could look something like the support that Emily received when she got the childcare experience?
It should look exactly like that.
And Kate, you've also made three recommendations as in relation to the ADE. The first was, well, one of them rather, is that parents and carers should be on board of directors. You've also recommended that there be volunteer opportunities, like you did, for parents and carers. But you've also made a recommendation that the ADE has better communication with parents and carers. Why is this so important?
Communication for the family or the carers of somebody with special needs is extremely important. Because although they are adults, they're essentially children. And we have to look after them and care for them and check that they're being treated properly, not exploited, not bullied. And we need to know that they're okay. And we need, the only way we can do that is having open communication. And it's extremely important because it's so, it, it's comforting. It's just an essential. We just need to know they're okay.
And can you think of any ideas as to how communication could be improved or what good communication looks like?
A regular newsletter, copies of the, the, the board of director meetings, so we know what any issues with the organisation would be. And having opportunities to have maybe, I don't know, social interactions where we could see firsthand both staff and employees and also opportunities or invitations for those that would like to and can to go and volunteer or spend a little bit of time at the, at the site. So we can, yeah, see with our own eyes and hear with our own ears and know that everything is good.
Thank you so much for giving evidence today, Kate, at the Royal Commission.
You're welcome.
Chair, may I tender please the statement of Kate?
Yes.
Dated the thirtieth of March, twenty twenty-two, as exhibit twenty-two dash three. Her pre-recorded evidence on the first of April, twenty twenty-two, as twenty-two dash three point one. And finally, the transcript of that pre-recorded evidence dated the first of April, twenty twenty-two, as exhibit twenty-two dash three point two. And Chair and Commissioners, that concludes the evidence.
Yes, all right. Those documents to which you have referred will be admitted into evidence, given the markings you have indicated. Thank you. And if that concludes the proceedings for today, we shall adjourn now until ten AM. Sydney Brisbane time tomorrow morning, Tuesday, and that's nine thirty AM at laytime.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned.